There are standards out there that we can probably tap into and understand. Well, like you have in your caveat at the bottom of your mailers to the residents saying, hey, you know, just for your own information and warning, you know, this is becomes a public record. The concern was always cracking that code because I think people were fearful of giving their personal contact information and it just goes out to vendors and marketers and that sort of thing. So we didn't come up with any epiphanies or ways to crack the code on that?
No, I don't think so. I think you're equating the city's stuff they're sending out to marketing things. We're, the city is not, shall I say, "marketing," quote unquote. We are providing information and those, I think, are two different aspects of communication. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand completely and probably, you know, the vast majority of what goes out will just be, hey, one side of information, we don't care, but maybe there will be surveys or you're going to ask for feedback on things or, I don't know, but maybe there will be times where you're going to put information out there and ask for some sort of response or try to get some sort of feedback on how successful we've been. I mean, maybe even the first time around, it might just be as simple as, hey, you know, just click reply if you receive this or something, just to know what kind of response or effectiveness you're getting on it.
We got your email right or something.
There you go. Did this go to who we thought it was going to?
Yeah.
And item last for me is just basically, what's the next step? Is the city manager going to take this on as an action item for what's the next step on implementing it? Come to the council with a recommendation and a budget and a timeline, that sort of thing?
We did put funds in the budget for the coming fiscal year and I would assume we would discuss this a little further at a work session to kind of drill down on the report so we can move forward with the action items that we need to start with, mainly the survey to get that data going at least.
Hey, this is a great first step forward and a foundation on leaping off for their communications with the residents and the community in general. So, great job. Let's see, any citizens' comments with respect to communications?
No, no one.
No, I think I also forgot to ask if there were any citizens' comments after the sheriff's presentation. Anybody have any comments or questions for the sheriff's office based on his report?
We have one hand, let me see. Stand by. Jane Lochner.
Great report. And I just want to say, you know, if citizens do have a concern about, for instance, putting out their, an email address, a good way to do is have what I call my bogus or BS email address that then gets forwarded to my real one on my own. So that's always a suggestion, but other than that, it was a great report.
Yeah, good stuff. Everybody's kind of come up with some workarounds for how to filter their emails and try to keep the spam out of their important information. So I'll leave it with that. Any other questions or feedback? I'll back to the council for final inputs to the report. If not, we'll move on. Let's see, we're going to the regular agenda at this point. And the consent agenda, on consent agenda, we've got items five and six. Item five, approval of the August 3, 2020 city council minutes. And item six, approval of the August 17, 2020 city council work session minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Into the regular agenda, item seven, consideration of adopting the proposed add valorem millage rate for fiscal year 2020 through 2021. This is the first public hearing on setting the proposal final millage rate for fiscal year 2021. Do I need to read something at this point? City manager, or are we just reading?
No, you've got the documentation in there, what you will need to do. Just to give a quick synopsis, the staff is recommending a millage rate of 2.0394, which will produce $1,164,305 in net add valorem. That's a $59,000 increase over last year. The millage rate is the same as last year. The increase is caused by the increased value of the property in the city that went from $566 million to $594 million. And so you, the council will have to entertain a motion to adopt the millage rate of 2.0394.
Vice Mayor?
Go ahead.
Councilmember Shirley is under the attendees and she has her hand raised. I didn't notice it, it's been raised for a minute because it's under the separate side, so she should be able to talk now. Councilmember Shirley?
Can you hear me now? I don't know why, I'm not seeing any, I'm not seeing myself on the screen, I'm not, but anyway, I wanted to pull out the item five on the consent agenda, I could not because I couldn't get anyone's attention. And I don't know why, I logged in with the information I have and I don't know why it's not showing my video nor giving me control of my speaker. Can anyone hear me?
And Vice Mayor?
I've got you loud and clear and...
Vice Mayor Gunn, can you hear me? I am back in front of my computer now. I'm not sure though if you can hear me off of the telephone or off of the computer, so I would like to join the meeting formally.
I've got you loud and clear, I'm not sure whether you're coming in on the computer or the phone.
I think you're coming in on both, Mayor, because we hear an echo.
Mayor Manzo online?
Okay, you cannot hear me on the, you cannot hear me on the computer, you're hearing me on the telephone right now. So I think you just have to unmute me, I just came in on the phone, on the computer.
Okay, so what's your request at this point, Mayor? Would you like to take over the meeting?
As long...
You're coming in and out, I'll tell you what, I'll retain chair at this point and ask for a consensus among the council members. Can we back up the consent agenda and entertain Councilmember Shirley's request to pull item five?
I don't have a problem with it.
Are there any objections to that? If not, I'm going to back up and, City Manager Reeves and City Clerk, if you'll back me up and keep me on the straight and narrow here. So we're going back to the consent agenda and what I would like to do is, at the request of Councilmember Shirley, I will pull number five out of the consent agenda and move it to the regular agenda and we will make that item seven B now, if that's okay with you. The consent agenda consists now of only item six, approval of the August 17, 2020 city council work session minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with only item six in it?
So may.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we're moving to the regular agenda now and we are still on the original seven, which is consideration of adopting the proposed add valorem millage rate for fiscal year 2020 through 2021 and retaining the 2.0394 millage rate. Is that correct, City Manager?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Okay, I'll open it up for debate or discussion. Anyone?
Vice Mayor? Can you hear me?
You're coming in with a strong echo.
Yeah, I hear that. Let's try muting the phone again, maybe we're back on the telephone. Give me a second.
Okay, I'm continuing with the regular agenda. Item seven, consideration of adopting the proposed add valorem millage rate for fiscal year 2020 through 21 and retaining the millage rate at 2.0394. We've had a motion, we've had a second, I've opened it up for a discussion or debate. Anything, anyone? If not, I'll take it to the citizens for citizen comments.
Hang on, Vice Mayor, I wish to be heard now. Whether we get this fixed or not, I still want to be heard. I'm talking on a telephone now, we're still getting slapback echo here, so is this any better?
I've got you a little better with no echo now. Are you asking to be recognized to address item seven?
All right. Obviously, there's something on the computer that my connection is not, it's not taking, but all right. So with regards to the budget, my position is very simple. It is a tax increase, however you want to cut it, and it is the dirty work being done by the increase in the ratables in the city. It's still a tax increase, everybody's taxes goes up based on this. I cannot support that, I ran against specifically raising taxes, this is a tax increase. And what is more important, I think, is that there's a number of things that this city council was presented via the Planning Commission, their very extensive report, and also the Finance Committee, which were ideas for revenue increases and other things that the city could do to increase its revenue take. You know, an example is, and it's just an example, there was, I think, 90 pages, but one example was talking about headquarters building. Here we have, in the middle of a pandemic, a headquarters building that basically houses four offices. It's total waste. So, you know, we can do better with that piece of real estate in terms of better utilization, better rentals and stuff like that. This council was presented all of that and it's basically, you know, we haven't went anywheres with it. So I'm not going into the pockets of the taxpayers and I intend to vote against this budget and I intend to vote against the tax increase. So that's all I wanted to say on it.
Any other council members? I think one thing that was addressed at the time was, a lot of those recommendations and studies that were done by the Planning and Zoning Board and the Finance Committee certainly took place before the pandemic and I think a lot of the, the truth has changed and we're dealing with a lot of uncertainty right now and time is certainly an issue of how long it would take to implement some of those changes. We did accept the reports from the different committees and boards and we just haven't been able to figure out on how best to deal with the recommendations because, again, the truth is changing and we're dealing with issues that nobody had ever thought of before. So I think at this point, it's best to just kind of let some of those recommendations sit on the slide at this point and let's, let's see how things shake out in the future. One thing is for certain, we're dealing with some issues that we, we don't really have a good handle on what the future costs are going to be. And so I, I think the best way of dealing with this issue right now is, as we have done in the past or now, is to freeze the millage rate with where it was and accept the fact that there's going to be a little bit of an increase, but that's also what goes along with the increase in property values. And that's just, you take the good with the bad, I guess. That's my point. Any, any other further inputs from council members or staff before I turn it over for citizen comments?
I agree wholeheartedly with what you just said. We are in a time of uncertainty. There are many things that are against us right now. We don't know what the cost of COVID and other external factors, how they're going to affect us. And I think at this point in time, it would be ridiculous to try to reduce our tax rate whenever we may very well have it reduced just because of the sales tax that's coming in. So I say we move forward with this and vote yes.
Marv, did you have a question? Input?
Just a comment, I agree with Dave. We don't know what's going to happen statewide with the taxes and with that uncertainty, I feel that the decision that we've made so far, we should move forward with.
Anyone else before I turn it over for citizens' comments?
Can you hear me? This is Jody.
Okay, Jody, go ahead.
Sorry, I was raising my hand and wasn't getting a response again.
She's still on the attendee side, I'm sorry.
I'll log off and try again, Patty, in a minute, but, you know, I, I agree, like, I'm not in support of raising taxes. I was very, very much against not considering the rollback, but given the current events and unforeseen expenses that the city's going to incur because of those events, coupled with the uncertainty of how sales tax collections and that sort of thing will affect our income, I think it's a necessary, you know, unfortunately, there's some events that will affect what our outlet is going to be and we're going to have expenses related to that.
Can I?
Robert?
No, I agree with Jody. I agree, I don't want to raise taxes, but with what's going on, but I would also further say that I think we should all kind of make a promise that we will actively search for new avenues based on what the financial committee said and look into other options, the Marina, the, the city hall or any other things we can think of and not just do what we have done for years and just keep going and kind of ignore opportunities. So I would say let's go ahead and approve it, but with the promise to really take a look and try to make a difference for the next year's budget. That's it.
Mayor Manzo?
Okay, are we getting the echo still here?
Yes.
Interesting. Hang on, let me bring this speaker down. Is that any better?
Yes, a little better.
It's good, I can't hear. Hang on, let me do it this way. Any better? Can anybody hear me? Okay, you're nodding, I can't hear you guys. This is great, I've logged in, but anyway, I don't agree with pushing this down the road, this is a real tax increase right now and we knew since March that we have a situation with the virus and possible decrease in tax revenues and these reports have been out there and we, it's incumbent on us for the effort that was put into them to do this work, so, and see where we could raise revenue. We have been talking about trying to do something and better utilize the space at headquarters now, well, ever since I started and I think before. So we're probably going on, that I've been listening to this, two, two and a half years and nothing gets done, nothing, I mean, just nothing, okay? So it's, it's a, it's a white elephant, if you will, it's, it's underutilized, any, any real estate company that had the utilization that we have of that building would immediately do something to try to increase it. I'm not saying that, that, you know, there's, there's all different ideas, some of it was talking about renting sections of it out, doing things, I mean, there's other things that can be done, that's the bottom line and, and there were other ideas. Again, not every idea that was given merits implementation in our city, some of those ideas aesthetically wouldn't work, I think somebody proposed a cell tower, I mean, there's no way in the world I'm ever going to vote for a cell tower in the middle of Bel Air Beach if we don't, unless it's forced upon us by the state or something. But, you know, what we can do as a council is to try and increase those revenues. This is, I think, probably going on eight to 10 years in a row that there's been just steady tax increases and they are exceeding the cost of living every single time, okay? And it doesn't sound like a lot, 1% here, 2% there, but, you know, if everybody else has to live within the cost of living, retirees have to live within their social security cost of living, their pension cost of living, we should as a city too. And that's, that's all I want to say. So again, I'm going to, I'm going to vote no and I urge everyone else to join me. Thank you.
Any other council members have input? I would say that no one came to this council with a bigger agenda than to reduce and implement stronger budget controls than I did. And all I would say is that it's an incremental process, I think the city's made some huge strides in examining the budget build a lot closer and I think we've kind of examined and analyzed our expenditures and our revenues and I think we're, we're making gains in that and I think it's an incremental process, we're going to eat this elephant a bite at a time and we're making strides, but I think the best thing at this time is just move forward, accept the add valorem increase based on the property value increases and let's move forward. I would, I would task the city manager, if, if we approve this and freeze the, the millage rate, then I would think we would turn right around and task the city manager that within six months, you make it an action item to resurrect all of these recommendations from the boards and committees and based on the changing truth and the new realities, let's go back through them and see if we can make some improvements. City Clerk, I'll turn it over to you, see if there's any citizens' comments regarding item seven, consideration of adopting the proposed add valorem millage rate.
Yes, there is. One second. The first one is Bill Lusk.
Yes, hi, thank you, Bill Lusk, Kibiskus Drive. Not opposed or for the millage rate personally as a resident. I don't think the impact is too hard to handle when you want to look at it individually, but as a city, I think it's a good thing. I'd also like to ask though the council to just kind of be aware of some of what is being discussed. For example, one side of us, we're talking about a slight increase, property values went up, keep the millage the same, but the residents have just incurred another tax increase in the form of a stormwater fee. Others, through conversation, would look at maybe residents who have a Marina slip and increase those rates. So things start to add up when you're looking at the big picture and then as you go light item through this year's budget, please be aware that you're actually looking at it spending money, whether it's $5,000 here, $20,000 there, $30,000 in another area. So just please be conscious of, of the big picture. Appreciate your time and as always, your hard work. Thank you all.
Patty, any other citizens' comments?
Yes, next is Jane Lochner.
Yes, my comment was very similar to Bill's in that we just have a tax increase with the stormwater fee.
Next is Mark Goldman.
Yes, thank you, Patty, Mark Goldman, 437 22nd Street, Bel Air Beach. I firstly would like to start out by saying thank you to the Finance Committee and the council members who work so diligently on this budget. It is not a huge amount of money as city budgets go, but is a large responsibility and I think they've done an excellent job to save money where we could and allocate it where the residents really need it. I think it's a little ludicrous to say that we're raising taxes if the millage rate doesn't go up, because I think you can pretty much ask any resident if they would like their taxes to go down because their property value was devaluated. I don't think anybody's going to raise their hand and say, oh yeah, I'm for that. So in reality, outside of the stormwater and the Marina fee, your property taxes are going up percentage wise, but not because the millage rate was increased, because your homes are worth more money. So I would urge the council to vote yes for this budget. Thank you.
And Rob Rissberg?
Yeah, this is Rob Rissberg, 231 Howard Drive. Can you hear me all right?
Loud and clear.
I, I agree with the previous folks who talked about, we've already had one tax increase this year with the stormwater and keeping the millage rate at the same as it is definitely increases the taxes. I understand what Mark just said, good point, but if the amount of money I have to send to the city in taxes increases, whether that's because of property values or not, then that is a tax increase. So what I would like to hear from the council is, what is the impact if we go with the rollback rate and the same amount of money the city took in for this current year, it takes in for the next year? What are the things that we cannot do that require us to get more money from the citizens by keeping the millage rate the same? Maybe it's justified and I have not had the opportunity to sit through the budget workshops and I know you guys have done this in great detail and long hours and I appreciate the work, but maybe if we heard a little bit about what is the impact of going with the rollback rate, what would be the impact of going at something more than the rollback rate but less than the current rate? You know, those kinds of options for us. Thank you.
Any other citizens' comments?
One more. One second.
Patty, did you have another citizen?
Yes, one more, one second. Trying to find them, oh, there we go. Oh, it's Mayor Manzo? Is that you or is that? Mayor Manzo? June? Hold on, it's, it's a phone call, but I, it's, they were both on... Vice Mayor, Mayor Manzo is on the call-in line with a raised hand, but it's unmuted.
You just, I think he's just unmuted. Can anyone hear me now?
Well, we've got a pretty good echo.
We're going to turn this off. Just look it out there for a second. Let's try it again. Any better?
Little bit.
Is any better?
Go ahead with your, your comments.
Okay. All right, Vice Mayor, are we finished with citizen comments? I don't want to step on the citizen comments, I just want it to be heard.
Well, are you calling, are you calling in? I'm confused here. We're still on citizens' comments.
Okay, that's fine.
Patty, have we exhausted all of the citizens? We've been through one round of council and then it'll come back to the council after the citizen comments are closed. Any other citizen comments, Patty?
No, sir.
Okay, then, let's bring it back to the council for last debate and discussion and Mayor Manzo, you're up.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Everyone can hear me, right? I think we've got it working, so when we finish this one, I will be happy to take back over the emcee duties here. But with regard to the comment that it's quote ludicrous to call this a tax increase, let me explain how taxes work in about 30 seconds. Your taxes are based upon your millage rate, which is not going up, and the value of your house, which is going up. You multiply the two together and that's how you come up with your tax bill. When you raise one side of the equation, as I remember from my fourth grade multiplication, the other side and the end product goes up with it. It's not ludicrous, it's called mathematics, it is called... is called the way taxes are done. And taxes are going up and they have went up for the last, I think at least
Point of order.
10 years.
Point of order. There is no need to be degrading to our citizens that make comments.
I'm not being degrading to the citizen. I said it's not ludicrous.
And it's being degrading.
Okay, well, that's your opinion. Vice Mayor, you can rule on it. How's that? You're in charge.
Yeah, let's, let's go ahead and move on with your point and keep the references to fourth grade mathematics out.
The, the, the point is, is that you multiply the two items together and taxes are going up. And yes, not only did your taxes go up, or your taxes going up again for your property tax, your stormwater fee, which you can call it a fee if you'd like, but it is still money you're sending to Bel Air Beach, that's going up for about $200 a year also. For a lot of people is in excess of what their city tax bill actually is. So you've had a huge, huge take by the city this year. In terms of the city, I'll call it taking money out of your pocket. So absolutely, I'm gonna reiterate and I'm not gonna say it again, I think I've said it enough. I'm against this tax increase and it is a tax increase. Thank you.
Any other council members? I, I will, two points for me is, and if we did do a rollback, and Mr. Rissberg had a good point, and I'm, I'm gonna put the city manager on the, in the hot seat here for just a second, and off the top of your head, city manager Reeves, if you could just give us an idea, if, if you did not have that $59,000 increase because of the frozen millage rate, what would fall off our budget plate?
Well, I, I think it would be infrastructure projects. We'd have to reduce them because we, we have no excess money with staff. As you well know, last year we cut a hundred-plus-thousand in staffing. So there's, there's not any real money anywhere unless you want to do away with some, some of the infrastructure projects or reduce them. And, you know, things like paving or, uh, street rest, well, paving I said, uh, things that do need repaired. And, you know, there's, we did reduce some things, savings accounts for bridge repairs because we have the money saved for that. But if we continue down that road and don't save for those, then in a few years, as an example for a bridge repair, the city's gonna be on the hook for, you know, $500,000 if it needs to be replaced. So my position is, what you would have to reduce is infrastructure. You wouldn't be able to reduce any operating. We've added some things, cameras for city hall to make a better security program. That's something new this year. Uh, seawalls, uh, work that we're gonna have to do on that. And then, you know, we just don't have any other expenses that I consider that unless you want to just do away with something.
Talk to me for a second about city costs. I mean, is it fair to say that a service or material we, we acquired a year or two ago is the same price this year or is going to be the same price next year? I mean, is there an incremental increase in that?
Oh yeah, that, that stuff increases regularly. Uh, just, just, you know, we're, we're right now, we're out to a bid for the stormwater project on 7th Street. We just had the pre-bid meeting this morning. Incrementally, over time, those prices have, have increased each year when the bids come in. So it's, it's, it's just the nature that, you know, construction costs or improvements have, costs have increased.
So over the period of time to do a stormwater project or repaving, it's gonna cost more and we don't have any way of increasing that, do we?
No, no, we, we don't. We have our sources of revenue, which basically, and, and just to go, you know, our primary source of revenue is the ad valorem tax. Then as we, we go down the list, uh, which this year is, is another issue because of the uncertainty of the other things that we have as revenue that come in, uh, sales taxes, the utility tax, the, the state shared revenue, charges for those things that are, are revenues that come in for those are still in an uncertain mode at this point in time.
Okay, so I go back to my, my conjecture about managing expectations. We would like to provide improvements in infrastructure and services for the city and its residents. And the expectation of the residents are, they want to see those improvements in services and infrastructure. But the question is, is how do you pay for it? If the residents want, don't want to pay for that, then, then how do we provide this?
You don't. That's the bottom line.
So the expectation is unless you're willing to pay for those improvements in infrastructure and services, if you're not gonna pay for them, don't expect to receive them. Joey, I saw your hand up.
Just additionally, there are some increased costs for services that the sheriff's contract. There are some dis
Yeah.
Service contracts that have an increase, cost of living increase, what have you, that is out of our control and those have to be paid for. And I'll reiterate again, what's really swaying me is the uncertainty of some of these things we've just been delivered over the last month. We don't know how that's gonna affect the city. If we end up with suits that we have to fund, we've got to know where that money's coming from. And we certainly can't cut costs with prospective lawsuits.
That's a good point. I mean, in the agenda this evening, we're dealing with increases in, in contracts, services, and what's the expectation for how we pay for these things? Anyone else? Any council members?
Vice Mayor, I'm sorry, I have my hand up, but I saw the Gaddis, he hasn't spoken. So if you'll take me after everyone's had their chance to speak first.
I'd like to add also that, that whenever we, we were elected, we were handed a lot of very old problems that had not been dealt with for many years. What we're being asked to do by certain people is to get those things accomplished, yet remain on the budget that got nothing done. We're going to have to stick with the sad floor on tax and we're going to have to ride it through and get these jobs finished. We can, we can look at saving money whenever the job is done. But I, I've heard over and over and over, especially down south, all the flooding, all of the problems, all of the issues with streets not being paved, gutters falling apart, our infrastructure has issues. And the, the extra tax that we're being accused of, which is actually a stormwater fee, is strictly for maintaining our current situation, not for upgrading and making massive repairs. So anyone to accuse us of having an extra tax disguised as a fee is just not true. And there are many towns around us that are doing the exact same thing because face it, we all live in flood zones. Whenever it rains, whenever we have high tides, these things happen. And with, if our infrastructure is not maintained, there's damage and then no one is happy. So there has to be a little gift somewhere to make these things happen.
I would like to go ahead and speak.
Go ahead, Rita.
I'm gonna agree with Councilmember Gaddis as well as Councilmember Shirley and many of the comments and information that Vice Mayor Glenn Gunn has pointed out. We do have a lot of work to do and we need the money there to do it with. And so I think that we should go ahead and vote for the tax millage rate to stay the same.
Mayor Manzo, I think you had your hand up.
Yes, thank you. I, I look back on the budget here and so we say nothing can get done. I, I think that's a little bit misleading, okay? Difference between last year's and this year's total, total budget is $59,413. So you're talking about $59,000 if you went with the rollback rate. That's what you'd have to make up. Now, last year, we never really got a good explanation, but somehow the city manager wound up saving, I think, was it $306,000 at the end of the year? And it kind of came to us in a windfall where we didn't have to tap, as I always say, the piggy bank, okay? Because even this year, I believe we need to, we don't fund all of our capital projects with the, even with this tax increase, we're still dipping back, if I'm not mistaken, into the, into the piggy bank to do this a little bit. So who knows how much savings may come through this year? Last year, there was no advance indication that there was gonna be any savings. And then low and behold, after all the budgets were passed, after the tax increases were put on the citizens, oh, guess what we found? $300,000. We never really did figure out where that $300,000 was found. So I'm just wondering again if we're gonna go for another tax increase, and it is a tax increase, okay, to our citizens, and then, oh, surprise, surprise, we saved a couple hundred thousand dollars. I'd like to know about that now because we're only, the difference between this year's budget and last year's budget, if I read it correctly, is $59,000. And I apologize, I was on the road, so I didn't get a chance to open this up the way I wanted to, but it looks to me like 59,413. That's certainly not enough to make your infrastructure crumble. It may mean delaying a project or tapping into the piggy bank a little more, or maybe sharpening that pencil and just like we found $300,000 last year, find another $59,000 instead of finding it in the citizen's pocket. So again, I'm voting no. Thank you very much for your consideration.
City manager, did you want to address any of those issues?
No, I, I think we, we've got a very good budget. I think we addressed those through the budget process. I think the council as a whole gave their, their input for what we've done. We haven't increased any staffing or anything like that. The staff is still committed to trying to save money in any way we can. And we're not just being frivolous with any of the city's money. And that's our goal at all times. So, and I think the council is, has that same commitment in general. But if, isn't it, you know, if we, I'm still recommending that we keep the millage rate at 2.0394. We're, we're in a, a situation that we don't know what the future's gonna hold and have been for six months.
Hey, Marv Beam?
We still have a, over a $2 million hole that we have to fill up with some kind of money. And I have to congratulate staff for finding that $300,000 that saved us by them doing some of the work themselves, looking at the jobs as they come in, eliminating some various things that the contractor was gonna do and they looked at it again and said, no, we're not going to. They saved money overseeing the, the contracts and that just shaves off $300,000 that we didn't have or could not have if they didn't do the job. And that just ticks off a little bit of that $2 million that we still have to spend on that stormwater project and probably a lot more than that. And I'll, I'll add something else in there. You've got a seawall on 16th Street, Park Seawall that needs to be replaced. That's probably gonna hit us for $60,000. And some of the other city seawalls that need work. So there's so much that has to be done. If we don't do this tax increase and the staff doesn't do their part as they have done in the past, which we never saw in past years, thank God for what they're doing, we're really be in trouble. So definitely we need to vote for this and just move forward. And then when things change, in the future, we can relook at all or relook at the visit, revisit all these things that we talked about this past year. That's all.
Marv brings up a good point. I mean, just this last week, we've had this seawall issue. I mean, obviously, it's something we were starting to pick up on our radar, but I mean, this, this really brought it into focus when we had a seawall collapse over there on Bayshore. I mean, it, it all goes in this column headed by uncertainty, the economy, this pandemic, issues faced by the city. We're, we're not sure. I will also throw out there, the human behavior aspect of this thing is it's, this is an easier position to defend than rolling back the, the millage rate. And then next year, due to a decline in the economy or whatever uncertainty manifests itself, having to go back and increase millage rates, I, I don't want to be that person. So I think this is a much easier, much more defensible position to hold from the human behavior perspective and doing a responsible job for our citizens. Then a year from now, having to turn around and say, whoops, you know, we need to raise the millage rate by four or 5% because we're getting behind in infrastructure or we, we had a infrastructure rear-its ugly head that we had not forecasted. So. Any other debate or are we ready to call the question?
Ready to call the question.
Okay, city clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Aki?
City clerk, just one second. Do I need to, let me just go back and remind everybody what we're voting on here and what that issue is, just for protocol purposes. This is the regular agenda item number seven, consideration of adopting the proposed ad valorem millage rate for fiscal year 2020 through 21. This is the first public hearing on setting the proposed millage rate for the fiscal year 2021. And essentially, we are keeping it at the current and existing rate of 2.0394. Did I get that right?
Yes.
Okay. City clerk, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Aki?
Aye.
Councilmember Beam?
Aye.
Councilmember Gaddis?
Aye.
Councilmember Shirley?
Aye.
Councilmember Swope?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gunn?
Aye.
Mayor Manzo?
Aye.
Motion carries six to one.
Vice Mayor, you need to read the bold section at the bottom of the page.
Okay, give me a page number.
Well, it's, it's this agenda item. It's the, the memo that I gave you for agenda item seven. There's a bold section that needs to be read.
It's, it's page two of 84 in the second packet of information.
Okay, I'm trying to catch up. Sorry. That was in the first packet? I'm sorry, I'm trying to find the reference for that. I've got two different documents open here.
It's in the second packet. It's page two.
Second packet, page two.
Needs to read this.
Vice Mayor, I have it in front of me and I'd like to make the motion to resume the chair so I could read it to the record if that's all that's necessary and then resume.
Any objections?
Thank you. Okay, so it says the proposed millage rate, this is what you want, right, Mr. Reeves?
Yes, yes, Mayor. Yes, yes, Mayor.
The proposed millage rate of 2.0394 mils, which is higher than the rolled back rate by 4.28%, is to fund the expenses of the general fund for the fiscal year, beginning October 1st, 2020, and ending September 30th, 2021. The final approved millage rate for the city of Bel Air Beach will be presented at a second and final public hearing that will be held virtually on Monday, September 21st, 2020, at 5:05 PM. Instructions for participation in the public meeting will be posted at the community center and on the city website at www.cityofbellerbeach.com.
That's, yes.
Is that everything, city manager?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. Vice Mayor, thank you very much for, for hosting the meeting. Very much appreciated.
Right, just a reminder that item, Agenda Item 7B, I, is now, we, we pulled out the, the first item out of the consent agenda. And that is now Regular Agenda Item 7B.
Thank you for that. So that is the next item, then, going to Item 7B on the revised agenda, which is the approval of the August 3rd, 2020 city council meeting minutes, correct, Vice Mayor?
Correct.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, to you.
I'll, I'll defer to Councilmember Shirley.
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor. The reason I wanted to pull these minutes out is there's a mention of my name in, in Mayor Manzo's statement at the closing of the meeting, and it referenced that I was witness to some conversation. And I just wanted to go on record that I was not witness to that conversation, and I'd like that redacted, or at least a comment made that I'm not, I was not witness to that conversation.
That, I guess I'll object to this whole inclusion of all this information. This is certainly nothing that was voted on. We've went through the Attorney General's requirements for minute taking extensively with our city clerk in the past, that this is even, I mean, and, and if you're going to, again, if it's going to be quoted verbatim, that is what was said. It was not objected to at the time. So my, I can't make a motion, but my recommendation is that this not be included at all. These are city council comments. They were not voted on. They're not action items. And quite frankly, it's actually inappropriate to include all of this level of detail. And I really question the city clerk as to why this level of detail is in there.
I'll just say that I didn't object to it at the time because it wasn't appropriate. You were making, the mayor was making comments. I didn't think it was appropriate to step on someone's comments at the time. So I never interject when someone's making comments. And I wouldn't. That's just not.
And, and Councilmember Shirley, thank you. That is the absolute protocol. These, these comments at the end of the night are supposed to be our comments, and they're not supposed to be debated. They're, we're not debating this. But I actually really seriously objected that this entire page nine is here, and it really shouldn't be. It's contrary to what the Attorney General has required. We've been down this road before. No one asked at the time that verbatim comments be put into the record. I, I, I can't get into my reasoning as to why I think they're here, because that would be against our rules. But there's no reason for them to be here. And, and so I, I'm going to ask that they be removed, and that these minutes be redone with that redacted, and be approved with that be redacted. Again, I can't make that motion, but that's what I'm asking. I think this is inappropriate at this point. And that takes care of Councilwoman Shirley's issue, then. Any council comments? Any citizen, yes, Dave Gaddis.
You know, I'm a, I'm a little bit gun shy of, of this whole document. I, I don't know what to do with it. I don't know if it's of any value, or if it's not of any value to the council, or in the defense of the city. I would move to table approval of these minutes.
Yeah. Have a second to the motion to table these minutes, table approval.
Second.
Second by Glenn Gunne. There's now discussion on the tabling only. The tabling motion is up for discussion. Dave Gaddis, to you, you made the motion.
Um, I, I stated my, my feelings on it. I would like to go through this with a fine-toothed comb, and take another stab at it in the next council meeting.
Vice Mayor, and then Marv Beam. Marv Beam.
No, I agree. I would like additional time to take a look at this and weigh what the issues are. That's all I have.
Councilmember Beam.
I would like to see the city attorney view it and get his opinion on what we should do.
I, I agree with that. I think that's a very good idea. And I, and I agree with the idea of tabling it. I, I really want this look back at against the Attorney General's comments and why this is here. This is not to be a transcript. It says right in the beginning of our, of our documents, and our, and our, our call to a meeting, it says if you need to, it says right here, if you need, it says, I'm quoting from what it says, "The law does not require the city clerk to transcribe verbatim minutes. Therefore, the applicant must make the necessary arrangements with a private reporter or private reporting firm and bear the resulting expense." So I don't know, again, why this was done. Perhaps there's a good reason. It's not evident to me either, so thank you. Marv Beam?
Through the, through the last couple of years, there's been instances where it has been mentioned that more information needs to be put in the minutes. And I believe that's why it was done. But if it's not necessary to have it in there, I would like to have the attorney look at it and let him decide on what's appropriate, what's not appropriate, whether we need it, whether we don't.
Any of the council comments before I open it up to the citizens?
Yes, I have one.
Yes.
This is basically to our city clerk. You have put these types of comments in many of the agenda minutes, correct? So I agree with Councilmember Shirley. If she didn't witness that, once that removed, that that should be the only thing removed. I don't have a problem with the rest of it being in there. But if the council as a whole wants the attorney to take a look at it, then I'm okay with that. But I just think that the Councilmember Shirley's request should be honored, and that should be removed. Thank you.
Glenn Gunne.
Yeah, I would like to state that if, if there is an error in what was transcribed, and that's, that needs to be corrected. But so far as whether or not it needs to be in there or not, I mean, that's, that's not something that's really necessary. It says it does not have to be. It doesn't mean it can't be. So for whatever reason, if, if it's in there, and it is correctly transcribed as to what was said, then that's one thing. But if there's an error in, or a misstatement, or, or something wasn't transcribed correctly, then I think Ms. Shirley has a, a, a proper request, and it should be removed. But I'm not sure. If it's there, it's there. And if it's, if it's correct, it's correct, for whatever reasons.
Marv, I'm going to come to you. I just want to interject. I know what I said. I said that, and it was not changed at the time. So you can't go back and start putting in what I should have said, and I might have said. It's what was said. And again, there's no reason for this to be here. It's not something that was voted upon. So I want this reconciled if it goes to the attorney, if this, if this motion to table carries. I would like, I, we've already been down this road already, but I want to know why this is being included here. There is no reason for it. And if this is going to be included, you again set a precedent where other stuff is going to have to start to be included. You can't do it when it's convenient, or when it may not be convenient. You can't play it that way. Then all these comments are going to start to be put in, that people make at the end of the, of the event. And that's just, that, that's not what's required in the minutes. Marv Beam.
Well, whether you take it out or not, it's on the tape. And that's something we need to remember. So let's not beat this to death. Everybody can refer back to the tape and see exactly what's there.
Any other council comments before I take it to the citizens? Madam Clerk, is there any citizen that wishes to be heard on this? This is the motion to table only, not to approve the minutes. It's just the motion to table.
No, there's no raised hands.
Back to the council with the last word on, this is the motion to table, going to, to Dave Gaddis.
I've said my piece.
Okay, I have Glenn Gunne's hand, so I'll go Glenn Gunne, then Dave Gaddis. Do you still have the last word if you want it? Glenn Gunne.
Just one last question for Jody Shirley again. I'm looking at page nine, and what, what was a specific portion you were referring to that?
The end of page nine, where it specifically says that Councilmember Shirley was a witness to this. I would not.
Oh, wait, two more.
Okay.
Do you mind if I brush my teeth?
No.
Mark Goldman is, his line is live, Madam Clerk.
I'm trying to mute it.
Okay, just wanted to let you know. Dave Gaddis, you have the last word. And then we'll call it, we'll call it for vote.
I, I just need more time to evaluate this and make my decision. So I would like to table this.
Okay. So the motion that's before the council at this point is to table the approval of the August 3rd, 2020 council minutes, and also seek advice from the city attorney regarding the parameters of what should and should not be included in this. And I believe that's, that states the question correctly, does it not, Councilmember Gaddis?
Correct.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
One moment. Councilmember Aki.
Aye.
Councilmember Beam.
Aye.
Councilmember Gaddis.
Aye.
Councilmember Shirley.
Aye.
Councilmember Swope.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gunne.
Aye.
Mayor Manzo.
Aye. So the motion to table carries, and there's, because of that, obviously, there will be no approval of the August 3rd, 2020 minutes at this time. Motion is, the approval is tabled for a future council meeting with the parameters that we established, which is for the city attorney to take a look at it in light of the Attorney General and any other law, and also for more information, and also a check to see what was actually said against the tape, and make sure it's transcribed correctly. Okay, that one is concluded. So now we move on to Item Eight. If I'm correct now, I don't think there was any other changes to the agenda. I was driving at the time, but I think that was it. So Item Eight is the consideration of approving the city of Bel Air Beach budget, making for certain expenditures, expenses, capital improvements, and certain indebtedness for the year, beginning October 1st, 2020, and ending September 30th, 2021. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Marv Beam makes the motion. Second?
Second.
That was, read it, Swope?
Read it, Swope, yes.
Okay. Marv Beam.
I say we approve this as it's written, very satisfied with it. We've all went over it a number of times. I have the chance of talk to the city manager about various items. I'm very satisfied with it, and think we should move with it. Thank you.
Other council comments? I'll, I'll reiterate my objection for the same reason given. No need to belabor it. Any other council comments? Any cities, any citizens would like to comment, Madam Clerk?
Yes, I have Jane Lochner.
Okay.
Too late. I had my hand up for a thing that already, already went by.
Did we miss you on, on an item?
Yes, you did.
Okay. Madam Clerk, would, I'd like to hear what she had to, the input on it. If necessary, it could be reopened, depending on what the, the input is.
Don't need to reopen. It was on the, the minutes which have been tabled. My only comment was why hearsays allowed in those minutes.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. No other citizen comments then on the approval of the budget? We bring it back for final set of council comments. Any comments with, with Marv Beam having the last word? No, no comments. Marv, last word.
No, I think I've shut them off. Thank you.
Okay, so before the council is consideration of approving the city of Bel Air Beach budget, making for certain expenditures, expenses, capital improvements, and certain indebtedness for the year, beginning October 1st, 2020, and ending September 30th, 2021. A yes vote will approve that budget. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Beam.
Aye.
Councilmember Gaddis.
Aye.
Councilmember Shirley.
Aye.
Councilmember Swope.
Aye.
Councilmember Aki.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gunne.
Aye.
Mayor Manzo.
Nay. So it passes six to one. The budget is, is approved at this point.
Mayor, there is a statement you need to read for the budget also.
I see it. Okay, on page two. It says, "The final approved budget for fiscal year 2020-2021 for the city of Bel Air Beach will present, will be presented," and by the way, I said, "it's approved." It's approved for first reading. So let me, let me read this again now. "The final approved budget for the fiscal year 2020 through 2021 for the city of Bel Air Beach will be presented at a second and final public hearing that will be held virtually on Monday, September 21st, 2020, at 5:05 PM. Instructions for participation in the public hearing will be posted at the community center and on the city website at www.cityofbellerbeach.com." Is that everything, city manager?
Yes, thank you.
So first approval has been made, and second approval will be brought for consideration on Monday, the 21st, at 5:05. We now move on to Item Nine, which is authorization to suspend bid requirements for replacement of stormwater pipe on Bell Isle Avenue. The description is to accept a proposal for replacement of stormwater pipe. And I believe this was brought by the city manager, because I don't see a council person's name, or mayor, or vice mayor. Is that correct, city manager?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is a, a pipe that is in the...
City manager, let me just, let me just get the, get a motion here, and then I'll, we can defer to you, okay?
Okay.
We have a motion to, to bring that to the floor.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. To read a Swope for first comment.
I defer to City Manager Lynn Reeves.
City manager?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is a, a pipe project that the pipe is, has failed, and is sinking. The roadway is, is falling in. And we got three quotes. They range from $16,000 to $48,000. The company with the lowest quote was MTM, and we have had experience with them on other stormwater projects. So I would recommend approval, so we can get this repair made to the stormwater system, in the amount of $16,370.
Any council comments? Question for the city manager. You say it's falling in. I mean, I look back, I guess your first quote was back in July. It's almost two months, well, a month and a half later. How badly is this falling in at this point?
Well, we've, we've put gravel in the, the hole, and, and had a camera inspection of it, and we need to get it repaired.
So you've stabilized it though so far, right?
Right, right.
Okay, good. Jody Shirley.
Lynn, can you, just out of curiosity, whereabouts is it located on Bell Isle? Just to, so we can take a look if we want.
It's in the area just the Bella Hibiscus, just south of that. It's where the, where the cross, cross pipe is going across.
That we just repaired?
No, 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 no. This is another pipe, completely different pipe. It's away from the intersection. It's down the road a little bit.
All right, thank you.
Any other council comments? Madam Clerk, is there any citizens that wish to be heard on this?
There are no raised hands.
Okay, back to the council for the final word goes to Rita Swope.
I don't have anything else to add, thank you Lynn for the information.
I call the question if there's no one else to, who wishes to be heard. So we are authorizing the city manager to suspend bid requirements for the replacement of stormwater pipe on Bell Isle Avenue. Um, he has indicated that he wishes us to approve the uh, MTM contractors for a uh, for the Bell Isle repair of, in the amount of sixteen thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars. Did I say that correctly, city manager?
Yes, Mayor.
A yes vote will give him that authorization. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gaddis?
Aye.
Councilmember Shirley?
Aye.
Councilmember Swope?
Aye.
Councilmember Aki?
Aye.
Councilmember Bean? Councilmember Bean?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gunn?
Aye.
Mayor Manzo?
Aye, so it passes seven to zero. City manager, you're authorized uh, to enter into that contract and agreement with MTM in the amount of sixteen thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars, and get that repaired done as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item 10 is to authorize the city manager to execute a contract addendum for residential, single-family and multifamily residential complexes, solid waste collection services. This is a waste management contract addendum. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Rita Swope makes the motion, a second?
Second.
Marv Beam makes the second, to Rita Swope.
I'll defer to the city manager Lynn Reeves on this one.
City manager?
Yes, Mayor and Council, uh, this is part of the uh, waste management contract. They, they have uh, within their contract, uh, tipping fees, if they increase by Pinellas County, that they will submit an increase to us, and also they can increase our fee depending on the CPI up to four percent per year. Uh, if you'll look in the duck, backup documents, uh, the CPI change ended up point five five percent. So uh, we didn't have a major increase, it's, it's an increase of about, somebody's phones ring, hello. Uh, we had an increase of about uh, forty-five hundred dollars in the contract for next year, and that won't cause any increase to the residents. So it's, it's just uh, an expense that'll be washed with the current uh, uh, waste fee that we collect each month.
So you have, you have enough room, city manager, in the fee right now, that's what you're saying? So in other words, there will not be an increase, even though their tipping fees went up?
Right, there, there'll be an increase in their contract, but we won't have to raise the resident rates.
And correct me if I'm wrong, we have no say in this fee. This is something that they set for us, and based on our contract, we have to pretty much accept it, correct?
Correct, they, it, within their contract, when they bid it, they put a provision in that uh, they could ask for up to a four percent uh, cost of living increase, and uh, uh, and any tipping fees that the county increases, and when I talk about tipping fees, if you, you don't understand that, that's where they uh, deposit, they have to pay a fee when the trucks go in there to dump, based on the weight.
City manager, I, I think the um, I, 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 I know with, you know, when it comes to the, these fees, that we don't have any, you know, any choice in the matter, but they, uh, earlier in the year, when the virus occurred, the waste management people put out a letter to us saying that they um, reserved the right to exercise their um, you know, basically the, the uh, requirement that, you know, it's, it's an act of God, and they could cut back on services. I have not personally noticed any service cutbacks, but I wanted to ask you publicly, has there been any service cutbacks, um, or any kind of reduction in what they've been taking, which would uh, decrease the amount of tonnage and stuff that they're actually collecting?
No, there, there hasn't been any uh, service cutbacks. Uh, the only thing that I would say that's kind of been extended is because of the amount of trash uh, did increase because we had a lot of people staying at home more. Uh, the pickup time, the trucks filled up faster, and uh, so they were working till right at six o'clock sometimes to get the trash out of the city on Mondays and Thursdays. But they, they didn't have any issues at all.
Great, thank you. Any other city, uh, Glenn Gunn?
I've got a couple of questions, uh, this CPI uh, aspect of this contract, is that just boilerplate that's typically in there? Did, wh- when this contract went up for bid, did the competitors' uh, bid proposal include the same sort of thing?
Yes, yes, yeah.
It did, okay. And with respect to all this controversy going on with recycling and that sort of stuff there, are we still getting our fair money's value out of, you know, what we're paying for recycling and where it's going? Is it going to the right places, and we're getting the services we actually contracted for?
Yes, yes, we kind, we're getting uh, the recycling on Wednesdays uh, that we contracted for. Uh, I'm, I'm sure they're not getting the value out of the recycling, but uh, you know, from a cost perspective, because of the, the disposal of it uh, probably is, has been reduced, the revenue that they might be able to collect, so it.
Yeah, I, I guess the point I was trying to make is there's been a lot of newsworthy controversy about people are paying, you know, re, for recycling costs, but it's not going where it's supposed to be going, and it's just ending up in landfills and dumps anyway. So you're paying for a service that isn't being followed through, so. My question uh, was with respect to accountability, that, that we are getting what we're paying for?
Yes, yes, I, I would say we are.
Okay, thank you.
Any other city council comments? Madam Clerk, are there any citizens that wish to be heard?
There's no raised hands.
Thank you, I come back to the city council with the last word going to Rita Swope.
I'm good with going to the vote.
Any other council comments? So before the council is an authorization to add, to permit the city manager, ask the city manager to execute a contract addendum for residential, single-family and multifamily residential complexes, solid waste collection services, that's been attached in our packet over here. Um, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Shirley?
Sorry.
Aye.
Councilmember Swope?
Aye.
Councilmember Aki?
Aye.
Councilmember Bean?
Aye. Done an aye?
Councilmember Bean?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Gaddis?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gunn?
Aye.
Mayor Manzo?
Aye, so it passes seven to zero. Um, city manager, you're authorized to execute that contract addendum as presented in item 10 in our uh, agenda tonight. Moving to item 11, Captain Liner is still here. Captain Liner, you're on mute, by the way, if you wish to be heard, so just unmute, please. Um, where, this is, item 11 is to authorize the city manager to execute the contract for law enforcement services with the Pinellas County Sheriff for fiscal year 2020, 2021. Um, the description on this is the approval of the PCSO Agreement for Law Enforcement Services. Copy of that has been attached as item 11 into our uh, adden, our, our agenda for tonight. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Great, Swope made the motion. Second?
Second.
Second by Marv Beam, to Rita Swope.
I'll defer to city manager Lynn Reeves if you have anything else to add, if not, I'll take the floor back.
No, I, this, this is uh, the annual renewal of the contract, it went up two point six percent uh, for, from the previous year. Uh, and the total amount is five hundred and three thousand, eight hundred and eight dollars.
City council comments?
I did, did, one thing I do, do want to mention, we took out uh, several things that we, that the sheriff was doing as far as uh, bank deposits, uh, delivery of uh, uh, console packets, uh, th- those will be putting in a mailbox here at City Hall, and you can pick them up 24 hours a day. And uh, we put in a provision to clarify about the parking enforcement on the streets and the parking lots. For the most part, uh, the rest of the things in the contract, and this will give the sheriff more opportunity to patrol the streets and do things like traffic and things of that nature. And staff will take that uh, duty in-house.
Okay, that's what I, that's why.
Robin Aki then uh, then Glenn Gunn.
I think Rita said she wanted to speak after Lynn, so I'll let her go first.
She, she deferred to Lynn Reeves, so we're gonna go through first for everybody's comment and come back to her.
Um, no, I was gonna ask Lynn, was there any recalculation with Bel Air Shore's amount? Remember, we talked about that, that since now with the umbrella ordinance, sheriff's gonna be spending more time um, enforcing that, so they should probably pay more in order to have more sheriff's time?
Uh, i- if you recollect, the sheriff said that uh, at the meeting uh, that we had with the sheriff, that he would have his fiscal people look at that, but it would have to be done uh, later in September and October. He did state that, so they are gonna look at that, they, they have to.
If, let's say they found out that, wow, they do spend way more time at Bel Air Shore, is there gonna be any change in the amount they pay? Or is that gonna have to go in the next round?
Well, if, if, if we find that the, the amount they pay with our share is different, then uh, I'm sure the sheriff and his fiscal people uh, would uh, adjust the contract to, to, to our benefit, and Captain Liner's there, and I think, think he would agree with that if, if that was the case.
It's safe to assume that.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Glenn Gunn?
Uh, besides tweaking the terms of the contract and the, the specific things that we were tasking the sheriff to do, I mean, we, we took some things out, which basically freed up some time to focus on other aspects of uh, the contract. But I had asked at one point whether or not we had benchmarked our cost for this contract against some of our neighboring municipalities. The, the question being, is it a level playing field, are we, are we paying similar prices, or?
Yeah.
Is there a Bel Air Beach factor, or?
No, i- it's the same price per deputy. If you look at the last page, uh, the deputy cost of ninety-nine, five ninety-two is the same in other cities, so it's, it's no different anywhere.
Okay. And for Captain Liner then, is there, are, are there any things that stand out that are significantly different between the work you do in Bel Air Beach and, and just our adjacent neighboring municipalities?
I would say you're probably the only, well, you were the only neighbor doing bank runs and stuff on like that. We all cut that out, uh, this year's contracts, I think y'all saw that and adjusted that, and thought they're kinda spent better other places. So that's probably, those couple of things we did re, rework are probably the things that were different than others.
Okay.
Any other first round coun, yes, Jody Shirley, first round.
Yeah, this is Captain Liner, you know, we do a lot of house checks. I know when your guy, when the deputies do them, they spend a lot of time, I've watched them, they're very thorough. Is that a normal, is that normal in most cities? Is that number of house checks normal? I thought you, I thought the report was, there was a hundred and thirty.
Three hundred and something.
Hundred, okay.
Yeah, three hundred.
That's about, I looked at those numbers, it's about one half, checking the house like every other day. So I mean, really, we don't say you have to check it every other day, we don't say every week and stuff. But the reason for, the reason we do them realistically is so you don't come back a month later and something happened, or you got burglarized. That's kind of the whole program, it kind of, so unfortunately, if you do become a victim of a burglary, it gives us a tighter window in which to investigate. Um, so Lynn and I had talked, we do push that off to where it put documentation in and say not to do this frequently, but, you know, there's always a trade-off, so if we check it on Monday, and we check it again on Wednesday, which gives us three hundred a month, well, then if occurs on Tuesday, we have a one-day time, we push it to a week, and we can always settle, so. But there's a, there's a checks and balances.
And, and I'll go back to, as I said before, and this isn't necessarily related to the sheriff contract, but we need to put on the next work session, really spooling up the neighborhood watch, I would think. You know, I know, and my neighbors, I know when they're out of town, I've got one neighbor, he calls me, says, anyone moving in or out, call the police, you know, so. Pretty good, you know, indicating, you know, there's some things you can do as neighbors to be a friendly neighbor and keep an eye on it, and I think if we spool up that program, it would relieve the sheriff of some of those, you know, kind of just responsibilities day to day.
And Lynn, I can give you that contact info, and I can tell you this to all the council, Bel Air Beach, we, we have a very good working relationship with the citizens, because I, I deal with ten, ten contract cities. Um, it seems that per capita, Bel Air Beach tends to call more often um, than some other cities. So it's really good that, you know, when they see something, they know something out of the ordinary, they call us. We always say that, but it just seems your citizens seem to listen a lot.
Great, thank you.
I have Marv Beam on the first round, then for second round, I had Rita Swope and Glenn Gunn, so that's the order. So it's gonna be Marv Beam, Rita Swope, and Glenn Gunn.
All right, I'd like to thank the sheriff, uh, this is a number of years ago, but they did find somebody in my pool when I was in vacation.
Oh, good.
So it works, I mean, it really does, so, thank you very much for that one.
Glad to hear.
Rita Swope?
I just wanna thank uh, you Captain Mike Liner and all your sheriff officers. You guys do an excellent job, in my opinion, their reports always show minimal, if anything, that uh, any kind of, you know, bad activity. So I really appreciate your services, and I'm glad that we were able to help remove a couple of things from the contract, just so you can focus more on what your responsibilities, in my opinion, should be, rather than, you know, delivering mail and of that kind of stuff. So I just wanna make sure I thank you very much for all your service.
Thank you very much.
Vice Mayor Gunn?
Yeah, I just asked a question about significant differences with our neighboring municipalities, and, and when uh, Jody Shirley brought up these house checks, I mean, three hundred plus a month, I mean, it, that's an interesting number, because if you, we only have like seven hundred dwellings here in Bel Air Beach, so we're checking half of them every month. So my question is, what's the demographic there? Is it because we have a high uh, percentage of snowbirds here, or? Uh, I mean, is it, i- if you went to Largo, would you have that many house checks? Bel Air bluffs or something?
People take a lot of vacations. I mean, it's typically, you know, when they're out of town, they call us, and we make sure we check on those stuff while they're gone. The only thing I'd, I'd point out, I understand that, you know, three hundred seems like a lot. Realistically with them, so you know, they probably take about five minutes to, to all the people walking around, so it's not like, I did it a lot, but it's not, like, they're spending hours upon hours of each house. It's about a five-minute check and make sure everything's locked up.
No, I wasn't trying to drive home a point, I mean, I was just questioning the numbers. I, I think it's a great opportunity to get into the residential areas and the neighborhoods and the communities. So I, you know, I'm not questioning it, I, I think it's a good opportunity to, to make the rounds and, and make a presence. I was just kind of, the numbers kind of hit me funny. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, just, just to clarify, uh, I don't know what it is today, but a couple of weeks ago, it, there's actually only twenty-two homes on house check. But if you take those numbers and you say three hundred, they're probably getting, those twenty-two homes are basically getting fifteen house checks a month. So when you see three hundred, you're, it's, it's not three hundred different houses, it's only, uh, as it was about two weeks ago, there were twenty-two that were active, but those.
Yeah, no, I guess my point was, it's just, I mean, just essentially, you're checking every other house once a month. I mean, that's, I'm just kind of putting it into round numbers, thanks.
I want to address Captain Liner, Captain, um, I, I've said it to Mayor, uh, to Sheriff Gaultieri last week, and I'll say it again this week, or, it's our last, uh, last session when he came here, and um, I'll say it again, uh, I think the profession. I think the professionalism and the abilities of the sheriff's department to handle crime in this city is exceptional. They've done an excellent job. The proof is, month after month, we typically have zeros going down the major crime things. You can't do better. I mean, I think there was one point, we had four, maybe five or six months in a row where we had no crime. I mean, that is a council's dream, it's a mayor's dream, it's a city manager's dream. So good work from the citizens who are keeping you informed, and excellent work from the people in the field. So my kudos to you. I intend to vote to approve this, and I also think later on, we have a discussion to actually add more law enforcement. It's something I've been pushing for, for some of the quality of life issues, because as I said to Sheriff Gaultieri last time, I think we ask a lot of one deputy sometimes, you know, to say, you know, we want you to handle speeding, and we want you to handle everything else. But, you know, the solution may be to add more law enforcement. So this is not a city that's looking to defund its police. This is a city that supports its sheriff department and certainly supports the, and is willing to put the money to keep that good level of service. So great job for you and everyone in the sheriff's office.
Thank you, Mayor. We appreciate the relationship.
Any other city council comments? I believe, then we go to the, to the citizens, I believe. We have not done that, correct? So let's go to the citizens. Madam Clerk?
There's no raised hands.
Okay, we'll come back to the city, to the city council. Rita Swope had made this motion, so she'll have the last word.
I don't have anything else to add.
Any other council members? I'm ready to call the question, then. So this is to authorize the city manager to execute the contract for law enforcement services with the Pinellas County Sheriff for fiscal year 2021. That appeared in item 12 in our agenda packet tonight. A yes vote is to approve that contract. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Swope?
Yes.
Councilmember Aki?
Aye.
Councilmember Bean?
Aye.
Councilmember Gaddis?
Aye.
Councilmember Shirley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gunn?
Aye.
Mayor Manzo?
Aye. So it passes seven to zero. City manager, you're authorized to execute the contract that appears in packet item number 12 for law enforcement services with the Pinellas County Sheriff for fiscal year 2020 through 2021. Item number 12 is to authorize the city manager to execute the contract for code enforcement services with the Pinellas County Sheriff for fiscal year 2021. The description on this is approval of the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office Agreement for Code Enforcement Services. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Marv Beam makes the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
I think that was Rita Swope. So Marv Beam and Rita Swope, Marv Beam to you.
The city manager gave us three options on the page, and I would suggest the council look at option number two as a favorable option.
Any other city council comments? Glenn Gunn, I'm sorry, didn't see your hand there.
I think we're talking about the same one. Are we putting the two together, the city manager's recommendations and options with this contract, or are we talking about just approving this right now?
This is to approve the contract. I don't, I'm not quite sure I saw what Councilmember Bean was referencing here. The question before us, and it's been motioned, is to authorize for the execution of the contract.
Yes, Mayor. What I did is, I looked at the options, leaving the contract with the sheriff doing 100% of the code enforcement, or doing a mixed situation with the sheriff's office doing part of the code enforcement, but using the rest of the contract for traffic operations on holiday and weekends that the council has, you know, brought up several times. But the contract would still be approved as a contract. I'm just giving you some options to how we utilize this contract.
Understood. Glenn Gunn, I have you next, but I just want to say, so what's before us now is not those options, it's to approve the contract. I believe, if I get you correct, city manager, we'll probably have a secondary discussion at some point, whether option one, two, or three is the desirable one for the council.
Yes, yes.
Glenn Gunn, to you.
So my question, I've got two questions. So can we amend this or cancel it at a, at a future date if necessary, if our requirement or needs change?
We can, we can utilize the number of hours that we need to utilize. We can reduce it, and Captain Liner can clarify, but my understanding is, I can use one hour a week if I wanted to, or I could use 16 hours a week. And I could say, okay, I want you to do five hours of code enforcement and 10 hours of something else, or none.
Vice Mayor, to answer your question, 60-day kickout on the 60 days' notice, and you could be out of the contract by either party.
Okay, so my follow-on question then is, would we be better served if we reworded this or amended the contract to say something along the lines of code enforcement services and supplemental duties to be as directed by the city manager, to provide that flexibility? Or are we kind of nailed down to this code enforcement thing? Do we need to put some language in there that gives us the ability to be flexible with the city manager's options for, hey, maybe I don't want to use 100% of this officer's time for code enforcement, I'm going to go ahead and give, go ahead and have him out on doing traffic patrol or manual light manipulation 25% of the time, traffic control, that sort of thing.
Vice Mayor, if I might toss my two cents into this, this term goes from October 1st, 2020. So if we want to have continuity, I think we have to go with the contract that we have now, in my opinion. And then if you, if we wish to make this change, I mean, we wouldn't be meeting on this most likely and resolving it until November, any, I'm sorry, October anyway, as council. That would be our next official session, unless we had an emergency session or a special session. So it would give us plenty of time to utilize the 60 days, but I think to try and amend the contract on the fly right now, I think that'll probably give Fred gray hairs. I'm not sure, but I think this would be difficult to try to amend this right now. So that's my point. I, the city attorney wishes to be heard, and I'm going to, I'm going to call on him if he'll address this.
Well, I'm just looking at paragraph six of the contract, and it says that the part-time community policing deputy slash code enforcement will shall be provided on an as-needed basis. So as needed, gives, the next sentence says, these specific hours of work of this community policing deputy shall be determined by his or her supervisor after consultation with the city manager. So to me, those two sentences give Lynn and the sheriff's department the flexibility that you're talking about.
Captain Liner, would you agree with that?
Yeah, I know, though this one here is for code enforcement. So, and you're right, obviously, it's, if you don't use all the hours, you obviously save monies and stuff like that. So we kept it very flexible, to say, you're not locking into 20 hours a week, you're not locking into one hour a week. So let's say you decided to cut back, and you save money. The only question I would have on this, this is the contract for code enforcement, typically what we do is, we have a law enforcement contract, we have a code enforcement contract, and then we have secondary employment for special details. That would be special events in traffic. The only reason, I would have to see how the sheriff would want to handle, there's two different rates. Your code enforcement is 47.88 an hour. Special detail rate, I think, is $55 an hour. So I don't know if we can use code enforcement. I think we'd be able to use code enforcement for traffic enforcement, but I don't want it to tell you that 100%, then I kick you to a $55 rate, if that makes sense. So right now, this is a code enforcement contract, and you determine how many hours weekly, and then if you save monies, you can do whatever you want with those monies. The question outlining is, can we use? You can do it, so I don't, I just have to check with the sheriff. I don't think you have a objection.
Glenn Gunn, you had a question?
No, I was just thinking, you know, obviously, there's a concern here. Does this need to be tabled, or do we want to move forward and approve this one, and then come back and change it?
This would keep your code as is now, with that flexibility. So you could determine the hours, and then if down the road, you wanted extra, let's say, traffic enforcement, then we would have to have the discussion, is that an addendum to the contract? Or is that a secondary employment contract? But right now, if you approve this as is, you would be able to go with either option one or option two, because you have the flexibility in your hours. But that's, I want you all to decide. We'll do whatever you want.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Captain, the contract, our current contract is going to expire September 30th. So if we table this and this doesn't get heard, we're going to have no code enforcement from the sheriff's office, correct?
There's provisions in there where the contract will continue, and the sheriff's is not going to leave you all hanging. So if you needed more time to discuss stuff on that, I think you'd be amicable with continuing as is, without the contract in place per se.
Mayor and council, I think you can, you know, you're just approving the contract going forward. If we need to modify it, that's just an addendum, because we're still going to use their services. So we can control that with an addendum, and if we decide to do an addendum in November or December, we can do that and modify the contract any way we want. But going forward, I would recommend that we go ahead and approve the contract as it is for the next fiscal year. We have the funding budgeted. What we use it for will be up to the city council, you know, in the future.
Glenn Gunn, I'm going to come to you, but I just have a question for Captain Liner on something he said. And I'm looking at, I don't have this year's contract in front of me, but I'm pretty much assuming that it's pretty much the same thing. And I look at item 12, and it says, this term, it says, this agreement shall take effect on the first day of October 2020. I bet last year said October 19, 2019, and shall continue in effect through September 30th, 2021. I don't see any provision for going month to month. So again, continuity is important to me, and I want to make sure we have it. I agree with the city manager, I think we need to approve this contract and then come back to it, circle back around, when we have a better understanding of how we want to utilize the hours, write an addendum, whatever we need to do. That's another council discussion. I have Glenn Gunn and Jody Shirley.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I agree with city manager, approve this now. The workaround is, you can reduce hours and put that money aside in a pot and come up with another contract for the other services at the $55 rate if necessary. But no, I understand and agree with city manager, let's move forward and approve this as is.
Councilwoman Shirley.
Yeah, Glenn, you're saying almost exactly what I was going to say. I think that this contract gets approved, we use the hours as we see fit, maybe we don't have to fulfill the hours that we've, you know, we use them as we need to. I know sheriff told us, he can provide his deputies whenever we need them at that $50 rate. I think we, you know, figure that out when we need to, when we need extra coverage, we use, you know, we talk to the sheriff about those items and move forward with this contract. And if we don't fulfill the entire $37,000 that is listed on there, then that money just goes in the pot for directed patrol at a later date.
Any other city council comments? Captain Liner, did you have any other comments before we take it to the citizens?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, any citizens wish to be heard?
There are no raised hands.
I'll come back to the council. Marv Beam, you have the last word.
Well, I think we should move forward with the contract and then consider utilizing the option two, the way the city manager would like to. If we don't use code enforcement 100%, we can take that money and use it where we need it.
Thank you. I'm going to close comments, and at this point, call the question. So this is, before the council, is the question to authorize the city manager to execute the contract for code enforcement services with Pinellas County Sheriff for fiscal year 2020 through 2021. That contract appears in item 12 of our agenda packet. A yes vote is to authorize the approval. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Aki?
Yes.
Councilmember Bean?
Aye.
Councilmember Gaddis?
Aye.
Councilmember Shirley?
Aye.
Councilmember Swope?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gunn?
Aye.
Mayor Manzo?
Aye. So it passes seven to zero. City manager, you are authorized to execute the contract for code enforcement services as appears at item 12 for the fiscal year 2020 through 2021.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we move to item, is everybody okay? We're at 8:17. Does anybody need any breaks or anything? We'll forge ahead here. Item 13 is the authorization to execute a revised agreement with the city attorney, and this is approval of a revised agreement with city attorney Fred Riley. I see no council members' names here, so I'm assuming this was brought by city manager Reeves, correct?
This was brought at the consensus of the council to.
From the work session.
From the work session.
Okay, fine. So we'll note that it came as consensus of council from the work session. Do we have a motion?
Oh, move.
Jody Shirley makes the motion. Second, Dave Gaddis. Jody Shirley.
Yeah, I think it's self-explanatory, we beat it to death at the work session. I read through the contract, it looks acceptable. I would say that we should move forward with getting it approved.
Glenn Gunn.
The wording in paragraph three, I mean, the whole emphasis was to make sure the city manager is fully in the loop. Does this wording cover the action or the situation whereby we had a council meeting, and the consensus of the council is to move forward and give the city attorney some direction or action item? I mean, is that covered in there, or does there need to be specific wording, city manager and city council?
There is a statement that says in the very last sentence, including when a request is directed by, to the attorney from the Belair Beach City Council while in public session.
Okay, I just didn't know if that word only negated that or mitigated it in any shape or form. If that's the case, I'm good to go.
Any council comments? I would like to make a comment. I've cautioned against this language, and I think upon some research, I think the caution is probably very well grounded. I have not discussed this with Fred Riley. I'm bringing this on right now, and I'm going to ask him ultimately his determination. I guess who wrote paragraph three? Was that, was that Mr. Riley or Mr. Reeves?
What I did, I did some revisions, and then I sent it to Fred to review and make comments.
So a joint effort. So here's my issue, okay? The city charter says that all powers of the city shall be vested in the city council, except as otherwise provided by law, or those powers specifically given to the charter officers, or specially reserved to this charter by the electors of the city. What paragraph three effectively does is filter all requests for legal services through the city manager. And that, I believe, is in direct conflict with section 4.06 of the charter, which mandates that the city attorney, quote, "shall advise the city council and the city manager on all legal manners, matters." So what's happening here is, the city attorney is advising the city manager only, and he becomes the filter or the choke point for the city council. And I don't believe that Fred Riley, as an attorney who represents the entity, the entity being Belair Beach, and us being the elected officials of Belair Beach, can represent the entity through a go-between. I don't think it's efficient, I don't think it's the right way to do things, and I think it may be in conflict with this charter. So, and that would be obviously a major problem. So with that, I'm going to ask the city attorney for his opinion, and if this is acceptable for him, both by way of the city charter and also by way of work as an attorney, to fulfill the requirements that he served the client, which is Belair Beach. Thank you. uh, to, to fulfill the requirements that he served the client, which is Bel Air Beach. Thank you. City attorney, I'm asking you directly for your, um, for your thoughts on that, what I just said.
Okay. Well, my thoughts are, one, my, uh, work and my, the authority that I, uh, use needs to be consistent with the charter, of course. I also need clarity about what, who, who is supposed to be directing me. And in the, over the course of the last year, that I, I will say has, has been a topic of some degree of friction. Um, having said that, I, as Mayor Manzo said, I do represent the collegial body, which means the elected officials are, are the collegial body as a group. And one of the things that is imperative to me and to any other attorney is to be able to have a, uh, direct line of communication with the client. And you seven are collectively the client. And of course, I'm supposed to also work with the city manager. I, I feel like I've worked with the city manager very well over the, the course of the last year. The, the thing that concerns me at times is that I have gotten the vibe that the city council members are afraid to talk to me or, um, are guarded at times about talking to me. And in order to, to do the job that I have and fulfill my role, it is imperative to me and any other attorney that there be a basis for a, a two-way, uh, conversation. And that, that's typical in any attorney-client relationship and it should simply be present here. So the, you know, am I, is this language acceptable to me? It's acceptable to me with the caveat that I'm going to, um, communicate with these seven members of the city council and have an open dialogue on those instances when it's necessary. I mean, one, one thing I know I have not done is, uh, simply call seven people and, you know, talk endlessly about the same thing seven different times. I've been very, uh, limited in, in the, the times I've reached out to y'all. And y'all have been, for the most part, pretty limited on the times you have reached out to me. But I just want a, a better situation because it, it's caused me, um, some degree of discomfort, especially the last couple of months, because I have done exactly what the contract authorized me to do. And there's been, uh, you know, unhappy comments for me doing what the, the contract required or authorized. I simply want to clarify.
City council. Glenn Gunn and then Jody Shirley.
How would you reconcile, you know, I, I, I understand all this and, and, you know, that relationship needs to exist. But how do you reconcile the issue where the only person who can obligate city funds is the city manager? So if they, if any other individual besides the city manager should pick up the phone or email you and something comes up where it's a billable issue, that person has just de facto obligated city funds. So, I mean, is there some sort of conflict here that needs to be resolved or how do you reconcile that? I, I understand completely what you're saying and it needs to, you need to have that ability to pick up the phone and talk to the city attorney. But at what point does it become, hey, you know, this is a, a public issue or forum? And oh, by the way, I need to start some billable hours on this thing because it's, it's more than just a, uh, a, a simple yes or no, or let me think about that, or whatever. Where, where, where does it cross those boundaries?
Well, I mean, one, one way I reconcile a lot of things is if each of you, each of the seven of you have some obligation to communicate with me if, if you become aware of something that you feel I need to, to be aware of. And, I mean, there are circumstances where it goes the other way as well. I mean, if, if there's something that I become aware of that, um, one or all of you need to be aware of, I want to be able to act on it. And, you know, most things, I will say, don't need to be acted on five minutes from now. Most things, I mean, you, you have predictable, um, situations. And, I mean, a lot of the stuff that I've worked with Lynn on is very simple. It's very straightforward. Um, any given week, he sends me a contract, a document or something, and it simply says, please review this and let me, you know, give me your feedback. And that's very straightforward. But there, there are, um, there are things that periodically will come up that I, you know, I, I, as the attorney, need to be, um, free to talk to whoever I need to talk to. And I would hope there's some level of trust in doing that. I mean, one, one of the things I told y'all when I, uh, applied for and interviewed for this job is that my billing records would be extremely detailed and they have been. And they've been down to the minute. And there, there's one thing that I'm, I'm torn about how I'm going to handle it. But, um, I will tell you, there's a, a lot of time that I spend on stuff related to the, the city of Bel Air Beach that I spend time on and it's billable time, except I don't bill you for it. And, you know, I, I think I better start putting those in the bill and, and putting them as a zero amount. Because what, what I don't want to do is have me call, um, councilperson A and then at the next meeting have council member B come, uh, raise an issue and ask why am I, you know, why is there a charge for X number of dollars for me talking to councilperson A? That, that's a dynamic that, you know, I, I will tell you, I can't live with. And because it, it tremendously narrows my ability to do my role.
Councilwoman Shirley.
Yeah, I think this is, is one of those unforeseen consequences where we're looking at this and trying to, um, I think, corral council members so that there's not abuse of, uh, legal services and driving the bills. Um, and, you know, and I think that your detailed billing, Mr. Riley, has probably brought light to, um, the amount of time spent with, you know, on some situations. Uh, you know, I don't know, um, you know, I think the, the, the reason we talked about this was because we're trying to avoid the abuse of services. How do we overcome that? I don't know. You know, I think that the mayor brings up some good points. Clearly, you know, we do have to have the freedom to, uh, reach out to you and vice versa. So, um, but I don't know how we keep everyone in check and not abusing that.
Well, I, I, I don't mean to interrupt you.
No, please, go ahead.
Well, I was going to say that the, I, I wouldn't torment abuse. I would, would torment that, that there are simply times that, um, in, in order to, uh, solve problems, hopefully you're able to, to solve them in advance. One of the concerns, and I, I listened to the workshop from Ju- July, and I told you before, I wasn't particularly, uh, thrilled with the, the comments at the workshop. But I fully understand one thing. The seven of you have the obligation to set a budget and you have to address all sorts of budgetary issues and you work long and hard on doing that. And if something, uh, flares beyond the budget, uh, ceiling that you sent, set, then that is cause for concern. I fully recognize that. And I, I will tell you, over the course of the last year, I've done a lot more things that, um, I really didn't anticipate I would be doing. But they were also, uh, asked of me and they were asked in a manner that was consistent with the contract. And I did them. And then I documented them, except for the ones that I, you know, simply didn't put on the bill. And I, again, will assure you, there was a lot of that. So I, I don't have a, a great answer. Uh, my real answer is y'all, the seven of y'all, need to be a coordinate better. And that's a very difficult task because you have to comply with the sunshine law. And it's very difficult, yet that's one of the things in the workshops and the meetings that y'all need to thoroughly flesh out so that the, the work level is consistent with the budget and you don't have overruns.
I'm going, Glenn Gunn, I'm going to come to you. I want to also react to something that Councilwoman Shirley said, although she didn't mention a name. To the extent that word abuse is out there, I take complete issue with that word. Um, to the extent that I used Mr. Riley's services and any of that might be directed at me, and I'm not saying any of it was directed at me, um, I don't abuse city attorney's services. Um, I, anything that I was doing with the city attorney was for the benefit of the city. I don't need legal advice.
There was no, that was not directed towards anyone.
Thank you. And I, I didn't say it was, but there was the word abuse and that's a bad word. Okay. That's a bad word. This isn't a debate. I'm speaking.
Many of us could abuse it. I'm not.
Okay, right. And, and, and to the extent that someone's abusing it is one thing, and I'm totally in favor of, of reining in abuse. But if you want to look at legal expenses and what they were spent on, then let's take a particular issue and let's have that issue. Want to discuss a records request? We'll go through and give you every document.
Right of order that's out. It's not on topic.
Right.
This is not on topic.
The word abuse is the wrong word. No one should be making that accusation about anybody on this council. And if you have abuse, then come forward with it. Come forward with it. So, um, Mr. Riley, I agree with you. Abuse is a very bad choice of words to be using on any individual here. Um, and it doesn't matter to me whether we limit this or not limit it. If you want to cut it out and put everything through the city, uh, manager, go ahead. I believe you're in violation of your charter. And since we can't speak to the city attorney on that, that leaves other issues then. Because how do we deal with a council that might be running afoul of its charter? So I don't know. Glenn Gunn, then Marv Beam.
You know, besides the, the aspect of, uh, obligating city finances, all of this banter about, hey, who's to blame or abuse or, or whatever? Conspiracy theory, let's put that all aside. And the way you do this is the professional courtesy of everything goes through the city manager. The, this council cannot come together in a public forum every day of the week to discuss issues. But I think one of the, one of the roles that the city manager plays is as kind of the referee and the traffic director and all of this stuff. And, you know, sunshine has been hammered into our heads since day one. And this is exactly what we're talking about. If you want to get rid of all the conspiracy theory, all of the innuendo, all, all of the issues about he said, she said, then this is the way you do it. The city manager acts as a traffic cop and a referee and this stuff. And as a professional courtesy, he has the 360-degree view of what's going on around here. And if it's important enough that it needs to be talked about to the, the city attorney, then the city manager should have some visibility on it. And hey, that's what this sunshine stuff's all about. We take it all with the warts and hair in all of our business. And there's nothing that should be going on that shouldn't be discussed in this, this collective forum here. So this is how you do it.
I would like to speak after Marv Beam.
Marv Beam, then Rita Swope.
I think we should all have, um, contact with the, uh, city attorney. But just simple, call the city manager first, say, hey, I've got an issue. I'm going to call the city attorney. That's it. Not stop anybody from talking to the city attorney, but just go through the city manager. Simple, simple as that. This way he knows what we're doing and, uh, he may have an answer. Who knows? Unless it's something private, well, that's another issue. That would have to be determined later. But, uh, I think we should start doing that. I don't see a problem in it. Does anybody else?
Rita Swope is next.
I would like to say that I think we should stick with everything going through the city manager. If we need to discuss something, it can be discussed during these council meetings, the work sessions. We can direct, um, the city attorney at that time. If he has any feedback or information to provide, he could provide it at that time. That way we keep everything going through our city manager because we've got too many other parties contacting our city attorney. And we're supposed to be a council of seven, not a council of one, two, three, whatever. So I just really feel like it needs to go through the city manager to control it. If the city manager can't answer our questions at the time, he can contact the city attorney. And if the city attorney needs to consult or talk with anybody else, I know you had mentioned in the last meeting that you consult a number of times with the, uh, mayor, since he's also an attorney. I think we should look at an outside attorney for that consultant rather than keeping it in-house. Because we need to keep everything on the straight and narrow. And I just really prefer everything go through our city manager and then he can take it to our city attorney.
Fred Riley, and then Dave Gaddis.
Well, I, I didn't mean to jump in front of Dave.
Dave, do you want to go first and then come back to Fred Riley?
Yeah, I think everyone needs to rewind a little bit and remember why, uh, this contract, uh, we, we wanted it changed. Uh, we wanted it changed because, oh, I'm not going to say anyone is an abuser, but collectively we were abusing, uh, uh, our authority to contact, uh, the city attorney. Uh, it, it basically, in the, in the current environment, uh, being able to pick up the phone and run up the bill at anyone's, uh, anytime there's any type of an issue, it creates doubt. And, uh, and issues, uh, between the council itself. And, uh, although I enjoyed the luxury of, of contacting Mr. Riley directly, uh, whenever I felt like I had something that I, that needed to be discussed, I am willing to forfeit, uh, that right. Uh, so that everyone is on the same page. And, uh, as Glenn referred to it, uh, in that meeting, we're not working inside a bubble.
Fred Riley.
Well, I, I want to follow up on something that Marv Beam said, and that is, um, having everything go through the city manager is fine, except there are inevitably going to be situations where, um, I will need to talk to one of the seven of you. And again, I am, need to, I need to be able to do that. And, um, there have been times, and, and I will just say this is a, a generic statement. If any of the seven of you ask me to hold a discussion in confidence, then I'm bound, you know, it's, as a lawyer, I'm bound to do that. I'm obligated to do it ethically. And I've done that. And, you know, one of the things I, this, this is a, a different topic, but I'm going to use the opportunity to point it out. I would ask that each of the seven of you look at the memo I sent you yesterday and read carefully the rule that I enclose, included, which is rule four dash 1.13 that relates to what my obligation is, is ethical obligation according to Florida bar rules to work with a organization as the client. And I have applied that rule over and over and over again throughout the course of the last year. And I will inevitably apply it again, or numerous times, in the, the coming year. But it, it's imperative that I or any other lawyer be able to have a, uh, discussion. But it, it's imperative that I or any other lawyer be able to have a discussion with, a confidential discussion at times with a client. And, you know, I'm fine with working with, through Lynn with the caveat that, you know, there are, are things that I'm going to have to discuss at, at other times. I, I'm not going to be a person that abuses it either. If, if I was abusing it, your, your bills would be about twice what they are. I'm, I'm extremely sensitive to the time and I, again, just telling you very plainly, I've written off quite a few things over the course of the year. And I've done that for the, the benefit of the, representing the organization and hopefully diffusing and solving some problems.
Patty, I'd like the following two sentences read or put into the record on my, on my objection to this motion as being against the charter. Section 2.045B, number one, says, quote, "All powers of the city shall be vested in the city council, except as otherwise provided by law, or those powers specifically given to the charter officers or specifically reserved by this charter to the electors of the city," end quote. My take on that is that nowhere in the charter makes the city manager the gatekeeper of legal. My second thing that I would like to add in, and I quote, section 4.06, and I'm going to only quote the appropriate part, quote, "The city attorney, quote, 'shall advise the city council and the city manager on all legal matters.'" It means that the city, and, and again, end quote, in my interpretation, it means that the city attorney must and shall advise both the city council and the city manager, does not give a choke point or a gatekeeper function to the city manager. So I believe that a yes vote here, in at least my opinion, violates this charter. So that's what I want to say. Thank you very much. Everybody knows where I stand.
Can I say something?
Yes, of course.
So, um, thank you, Fred, for all of your hard work since you've joined us. Obviously, I don't want to violate the charter, so I'm still a little confused. So Fred, does this, what this, what we're discussing, does that go against our charter? Does it support it? Or is it kind of just ambiguous or you could read it either way and it would be fine either way? I just want to know because obviously I don't want to do anything against the charter.
Well, what, what was just read is read, I don't have it in front of me, but it, it, I'm sure is verbatim what the charter says. And Mayor Manzo has his interpretation of it. And I, I, I'm, I'm sitting here listening to all the comments. I, I'll make another comment. Sometimes y'all make it exceptionally hard for me to do my job. And there, there are times it, it's so complicated and so ethically complicated, it, it's really difficult to do it. And I don't know what the solution is other than me continuing to try and be forthcoming with all of y'all in, in representing the collegial organization. I, again, am going to stress that one rule that I include, included and how important I think that rule is to the situations that I've had to deal with over the course of the last year. And it's not unique to Bel Air Beach. I've dealt with the same type of issues in Haynes City. So to answer your question, Robin, is, is it in direct violation? It's arguable, in my opinion. One, one way that I can fulfill the charter requirement is I can, every single email that is between Lynn and I, I can copy all of y'all on. I have no problem with doing that. I, I want you to know what I'm doing. But there, there's, there's always a caveat to that, that there are times, there are sensitive things that come up that, you know, I, I, I have advocated over and over again, if there's something that's sensitive or highly sensitive, and some things are, then the appropriate thing to do is to talk to somebody directly. And I, I have always been an advocate for that. Because I think you owe it to the other person, give them an opportunity to address a sensitive topic. And unfortunately, this is one of the, the complications that we have to work with. I can't work around it. I'd like to, but I can't, is the seven of you have to meet in public. And, you know, I can have seven individual conversations with each of you, yet I can't communicate as a conduit, just like Lynn Reeves can't do that or anybody else. And that, it, it's a complication that we have to work with in Florida because that's a Florida law.
Well, to me, it seems like this may, and this is my interpretation, may be tying your hands just a little bit. So I'm probably not going to vote for this and I would trust because I've never abused or actually I've never even used your services or talked to you about anything on the record or on the books. So I have no problem either way because I'm not, I'm going to abuse it. And I would assume that everybody would also do the same thing and do it reasonably. And if you're not sure, you can contact Lynn Reeves and talk to him about it before you do make the next step to call Fred. So I'll probably say no to this just because I don't want to tie your hands, Fred, and put you in any more of a difficult position than we sometimes do.
Well, I'll, I'll make a suggestion, and that is you table this for another meeting and I will add some language that I think may be helpful. And I simply continue on until next month, the way that, that we've, you know, the, the current contract reads and, you know, try to do it that way.
That's a good idea.
Glenn Gunn, then Marv Beam.
We're almost there. I mean, the issue isn't on the direction side, it's basically on the feedback side or response side. Is that correct, Fred?
Well, it needs to be a two-way street. If one of y'all need to contact me, then you should be, you should do that. So, but there, there absolutely needs to be some parameters so that you don't have the, exceeding your budget. That, that to me is what the real problem is, is that the, the way the contract was set up for the course of the last year resulted in more money being spent than you budgeted for. That, that is my understanding of the, the problem.
Okay, so I have no problem in delaying this decision to give you time to come up with some more comfortable terms, but rather than following the existing wording, I guess my request would be, if possible, to follow the intention of where we're trying to go with this thing. In other words, limit the conversation to city attorney, city manager, council. Does that make sense at all?
Yeah, it does until something happens later this week where that doesn't work anymore. That, that's the, the point I'm getting to. I mean, again, there, there are things that y'all are unaware of and, you know, it's because I have to keep competences.
Okay, so these are things that we are unaware of that, I mean, obviously are they of a private nature or do they involve the city? So, so I guess the, the follow-on question to that is if, if we leave the existing wording in effect until you come up with other wording, then where are we in all of this?
You're using the current contract you have in place until you meet again a month from now. And I would hope that wouldn't be, create an untenable situation. It shouldn't.
I have another comment to make.
Go ahead.
Okay, I am a little bit confused, City Attorney Riley, because we're, we're a small city. We really should have small problems. We don't have any commercial businesses. So anything that goes on in this city should be made aware of to the entire city council. I don't understand all of this, I'm sorry, I just don't understand all this private, confidential information because we're a small city. We're a small little residential town that, you know, normally doesn't have any issues. I mean, we don't have any commercial businesses. We don't have that issue at all. I mean, I know Haynes City does and I totally understand that. But anything that involves this city should be known by this city council as a whole and not each individual city council member calling you with certain things in regards to the city that aren't known by the other city council members. So if we all take our concerns to the city manager and then he contacts you, that way it is known on the next city council member because, can't council meeting because then you can reflect and inform the rest of them. But if we go through the city manager, then at least we have some point of contact rather than calling you and billing the taxpayers for all of those calls. I mean, ultimately, it's coming out of their money. And, and I just don't see anything that's, should be that important where it should be a private confidential conversation. So I am totally confused about that aspect of it altogether.
Dave Gaddis.
I'm just seeing a, I'm seeing one of the citizens, they've got their hand raised. I don't know how long it's been that way, but I'm, I'm not, I just wanted to make sure we don't miss that person.
We haven't finished first round of the, the council comments. We haven't went to the citizens yet, so. Any other council comments before we go to the citizens? Marv Beam.
Like I said earlier, we can call the city manager and we can say, well, it's a confidential matter. All right? The city, city manager knows we're calling the attorney. If it's not a confidential matter, the attorney can say it's not confidential, don't worry about it. He can either nix it there or then have the discussion with the city manager to go further. That's, I don't see anything else as that important that can't be handled in that way. I don't know why we're beating this to death.
Any other council comments? Madam Clerk, if the citizen, any citizens that would like to be heard, this is the time.
Yes, we have Kim. Kim, can you unmute yourself? Okay. She's not unmuting, so she, like Councilmember Gaddis said, she's had her hand up for a while. She may have walked away for a moment.
If she comes back, we can, we can bring her in.
Okay.
Uh, any other citizens? Patty, before I come back to the, the council, Glenn Gunn has his hand up.
No, no others.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna keep citizen comment open only for this individual who's had her hand up. So if she comes back, Patty, just let us know, we'll bring her in under, even though we're in council comments, just let, just let us, let me know and I'll get right to her. Back to Glenn Gunn.
Mayor, there is someone just, the hands up.
Okay, we're, we have citizen comment.
You see it, Patty?
Sorry, this is Kim Shaw Elliott. We've had a technical difficulty, obviously. What I wanted to suggest is that the contract that is proposed states that it will be in accordance with the ordinance and that the communications would be directed through the city manager. I think this is an example of kind of a review of what the roles are of each of the entities here in that the city council serves as the policy maker, they make the rules, they make the ordinances and come up with the budget. Whereas the city manager's job is to implement and to oversee the budget and to enter into arrangements that are within the bounds of that budget. And any entity, any entity works through others and has somebody accountable for controlling costs and monitoring costs. So I think what has been proposed is not inconsistent with law in the sense that it states that it will be consistent with the ordinance. Anytime during a city council meeting, the city attorney is there, his input can be sought. Any board member can talk to that attorney. But at the same time, when we're talking about other matters and bringing in new issues, it seems to me totally appropriate that the city manager would be accountable for managing the budget and for monitoring those expenses. So I thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Any other citizen comments? I don't see Patty anymore. Did she drop off? Hang on, Lynn Reeves has stepped out, so maybe he's going to find where Patty's at. Okay, Patty, we, we have you back in Lynn's spot. Were there any other citizen comments?
No, no others.
Okay, so then we'll close citizen comments and come back to council. Dave, I'm sorry, Glenn Gunn.
I, I think our last citizen comment was, was spot on. I mean, the public forum, anything can be said or directed. I guess I'm having, the problem that I'm having is along the same lines as Rita Swob. I mean, it's all public forum. Everything we're supposed to do is in the, in the sunshine. Everything's a public record. So what is this concern about, I've got private issues going on? I don't understand why the city manager shouldn't be the referee, the traffic cop in this thing and have the professional courtesy because it is his job to obligate city funds to have knowledge of, of what interactions are going on between the council members, his staff and contracted employees. That's a lock. We've worn it out.
Robin, Aki, and then Marv Beam.
Well, I, I would suggest that we, I don't know if I need to make a motion to table it until Fred can make a little bit more verbiage to give him a little bit more freedom. Because like I said, I, I have no problem talking to the city manager. I just want to make sure we don't tie Fred's hands or put him in a awkward situation or depending on someone's interpretation, maybe violate the charter. So I move to table this. I don't know if that's okay to do now.
So the motion is to table. Do we have a second to the motion?
No.
I'll second.
Marv Beam seconds it. It's open for discussion, starting with Robin Aki.
I think I've already said what I've been saying.
Any other council comments on that? Marv Beam.
Lynn pays the bills anyway, so why not go through him? He's going to find out, we went to the city attorney anyway. It just makes everybody a little more honest, I guess. I don't know why, but if we just simplify things and let Fred change whatever verbiage he needs to change so we, we're not affected by the charter. And hopefully that'll make everybody happy.
Any other comments on the, on for table? Fred, I'll come to you after council finishes their comments on the first go-round here. So this is on the motion to table. Anybody else on council wish to be heard? Fred Riley.
I, I would ask that you table it. I, I would like to give you an example of the type of situation that I'm concerned about.
I have Cheryl Gray who's talking with an open microphone, Patty.
But the, the situation that I will, it would use as an example is commonplace and it happens without there being any, uh, anything nefarious, nothing illicit, it is a garden variety issue that comes up, is that, that there's a, an issue on the agenda and there's a question in a council member's mind whether there is a, uh, voting conflict. And if, and so they, what they should do when they, any of the seven of you see that there's a potential for a voting conflict, you should stop, get legal advice, and the legal advice is typically going to be fact intensive, uh, most of the, the ethical issues are, and that is a situation where a council member should be able to pick up the phone, call me, and we have a discussion that is not, um, in the open for everybody else to consider because that, that is a typically a, uh, attorney-client discussion. And that's, that's a great example of what I'm talking about. There's no illicit intent, nothing nefarious, it's to make sure that it, we, we address that issue and there are times, and I, I've done this a long time now in my career, where, um, y'all really don't want to discuss certain things in public related to a voting conflict. Um, you know, I mean, some of it may involve your family, some of it may involve your business, and there are times that that's a best be, a private discussion between the attorney and the city council member. So, that's my glowing example. I, again, would ask that you continue it and give me an opportunity to give you some revised language, and I, I want to make one more comment. In January, I, uh, had, had an agenda item where I talked about the friction within the city government and the untenable situation that I saw. And I urged you at that time to find a way to work better amongst each other, and part, part of the problem, and I, I will just say it because I'm gonna say it bluntly, is there is a lack of trust at times, and it, to me, goes back to the friction and the untenable situation. And, um, you know, I, I don't know how, where the solution is, but I still am optimistic there will be a solution to that problem. But I, again, encourage you to give me, or to, to extent, uh, continue it so I can address language and come up with something that I think will solve the problem I, that you, you've made clear concerns, a number of you.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Is there any other council comments before I ask the citizens if they wish to speak regarding the table, the motion to table this? There are none. Um, oh, wait, Glenn Gunn?
Yeah, with respect to Mr. Riley's comments there, is it unreasonable to, to, to suggest that you can't pick up the phone and say, "City manager, I'm responding to a request from a council member, I can't go into all the specifics"?
That's perfectly fine.
Okay, so, okay, so, I, so the issue isn't specifically using the city manager as a focal point or a conduit for this stuff, it's just a matter of the degree of information or specifics that you're willing to give them.
It, it's fine for him, somebody to do that, but there may be a situation where somebody doesn't want to do that. And if, if they want to talk to me as the attorney for the collegial body, then there needs to be that channel of communication. And that goes to, again, the level of trust that I hope you would have.
Dave Gaddis?
So then my question is, if, if the contract as it's written is so bad, why did you go along with it and help Lynn write it?
I didn't say it was so bad.
Okay.
That the contract as you, as written is consistent with what y'all discussed at, at a previous workshop.
Okay, and, and you would not have written that contract in such a way as our legal counsel, uh, to where that contract was in direct conflict with our charter, is that correct?
That's correct.
That's all I'm, that's, that's all I need to know right there, thank you.
Any other council comments? Patty Gentry, is there anyone who wishes to be heard on the motion to table only? This is the motion to table.
Um, I have a hand up, I'm, um, let's see, it's Leslie. Oh, Lynn, oh. Leslie? Is she unmuted, Lynn? Leslie? Okay, Mayor, she's not responding, so.
Okay, I'll do the same thing, we'll keep it open until we call the question, and if she, if she gets back, we'll just let me know and we'll get her back in.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, back to any other council comments before we give Robin Aki the last word on the motion to table. Robin Aki, you have the last word.
No, I think we should just let Fred write it how he would write it. Obviously, Lynn wrote it and I think there are some interpretation issues and none of us, other than the mayor and Fred are lawyers, so we don't quite understand how to do this. So I say, let Fred do it and fix it and we'll come back and approve it later.
Okay, so before the council, right now is a motion to table, the, uh, the authorization to execute the revised agreement, a yes vote on here will table this. Um, if, if you vote no, then we'll move forward with the vote on the, um, on the contract changes. So with that, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Beam?
I didn't hear that, I'm sorry, I did not hear that, what that was.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Councilmember Gaddis?
No.
Councilmember Shirley?
Aye.
Councilmember Swope?
Nay.
Councilmember Aki?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gunn?
Aye.
Mayor Manzo?
Aye. So, by my count, it passes four to three, the motion is ta, the authorization to, uh, execute the agreement is tabled pending revision by Fred Riley and, uh, and further discussion at the ne, at the next council meeting. We move on to item fourteen, um, authorization, authorize, I'm sorry, the city manager to execute an extension to the memorandum of understanding for accounting services. The description is approval of the memorandum of understanding with Andrew Tess CPA. Uh, I believe this was brought by the city manager, there's no council member's name here, and the city manager is rejoining us. First, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Rita Swope makes the motion, and a second by?
Second.
Okay, we'll go to Rita Swope first.
I'll defer to City Manager Reeves.
Mayor, uh, I'm sorry, Manager Reeves?
Yes, this is a, a renewal of the contract understanding we have with, uh, Andrew Tess. Uh, if you remember, he was appointed the city treasurer, and in his contract, he is, uh, in his previous contract, there, there's a clause that allows a three percent, uh, increase, uh, annually, and that, uh, amount went from the current thousand fifty-seven weekly to a thousand eighty-nine weekly. Uh, I think he's done, uh, a great job for us and, uh, we continue to have, uh, a good working relationship with him for the city. So, that's, that's all I have to say. Patty's got a problem with her, uh, earbuds there, they, so, we're kind of switching back and forth, so she can...
No problem, I can see you both, so when, when you switch off, I'll see, um, and I'll announce that just for anybody who's listening. Uh, any, um, any council comments on this first round? Okay, um, we will, uh, well, now I don't have anybody here. Um, I'm looking for Patty or Lynn to see if there's any citizens that have any comments.
Okay, hold on, Mayor, one second, there, there is one, yeah.
Okay.
You can hear now?
Yeah, they're charged again.
Okay.
Okay. Mayor, okay.
Yes.
Leslie, uh, I, I don't know, this could be, I wasn't in control of the board, so let me see if Leslie's still there, one moment. Leslie? Mayor?
Yes?
No.
Okay.
Oh, there's, no.
All right, so no, a, again, I'll keep it open, if, if, I know we're having some technical difficulties, if there's any council, if there's any citizen comments, we'll certainly get them in. Um, but are there any, uh, there's no other comments then by the citizens, no other hands?
There is not.
Okay, then we'll come back to council. Rita Swope has the last word.
Don't have anything further to say, call for the question.
Well, okay, author, so the question before the council is to authorize the city manager to execute an extension to the memorandum of understanding for accounting services. A copy of that detail appears as item number fourteen in our agenda packet. A yes vote will authorize the city manager to proceed. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gaddis?
Aye.
Councilmember Shirley? Pardon?
Aye.
Councilmember Swope?
Aye.
Councilmember Aki?
Aye.
Councilmember Bean?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gunn?
Aye.
Mayor Manzo?
Aye. So it passes seven to zero, city manager, you're authorized to execute the extension to the memorandum of understanding pursuant to what was in our packets, um, and agenda packets at item number fourteen.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, uh, item number fifteen is the consideration of nomination for appointment slash reappointment of the Forward Pinellas Beach Communities representative for a two-year term. Um, this transmits the city's nomination to the Big C. Um, it was placed on by the city manager, do we have a motion first?
So moved.
Rita Swope makes the motion, second?
Second.
Marv Beam is second, we'll move to Rita Swope.
I'll defer to City Manager Reeves.
City Manager?
Yeah, this is, uh, reappointing, uh, Mayor Cookie Kennedy, she's the, she's serving the current term and she represents the Beach Community at Forward Pinellas. Uh, and, uh, this, uh, was, was actually brought from the Big C, uh, organization. So it's, it's just confirming the vote that they're recommending.
Uh, well, okay, let me just add something to that, it, it, you actually have the option of appointing your own official, so if anybody, I, I have no interest in doing this personally, um, if anybody else on here wants to be nominated, that's an option, if you put your name in, then this council can consider it, if not, Cookie Kennedy is the person, I believe, who's been doing it and, um, and she'll be reappointed or will make the, uh, vote to reappoint her and then it'll depend how the Big C goes. So, um, is there anyone on council, any elected officials who have interest on this?
I have questions.
Yes.
Yeah, questions are, Cookie's been serving in this capacity for quite some time and has never brought us back any reports. Um, how do we get information of what they're doing? I mean, we certainly don't want Forward Pinellas bringing public transit to Beller Beach, I don't think. So, Lynn, what's the deal with that?
I think, I think this is, this is a nomination from the Big C, so we either basically vote yea or nay, whether we want Cookie Kennedy to be the representative, uh, as I understand it, is that not correct, Mayor?
I, I don't think so, I, I think, um, they're, they're, they wanted, we have to determine whether we want to nominate her or put up someone of our own, and now a question has just been raised on the floor. Um, I will, um, if I might, I mean, I do attend those and I know Marv Beam has attended the Big C's regularly, some other people have too occasionally, but, um, there is occasional report on here, um, Jody Shirley's absolutely right, Forward Pinellas' agenda is to bring mass transit to the, uh, beach communities and, um, whether you like it or not, that's their agenda, I mean, they, they, they want to push mass transit, so, um, it's, it's, may not be something that our community desires of, I, my feeling from speaking to most of the people that I know of in the community, that's not something we wanted to do. So, um, you know, the Big C's going to vote on this because the Big C gets one representative, um, but, you know, the points should be, uh, considered, absolutely. I, I've never seen a report come back here personally, there may be some stuff at the Big C, we get some updates, um, but, you know, in terms of letting all the cities know regularly, um, not really seeing too much, I don't think. Marv Beam?
We've had Forward Pinellas at a city council meeting probably about a year ago, a year and a half ago. Lynn, do you remember?
Yeah, they, they came about, uh, uh, West Bay, they came in.
Right. Trying to bring that all the way.
They gave us an update then.
Right.
So that was before the two thousand nineteen council was seated.
Right.
We didn't like what they said, I mean, they were, the plan included widening West Bay all the way to Gulf Boulevard and having, um, you know, a trail, and we weren't, you know, I, myself wasn't very pleased with what they talked about doing, which was narrowing the road and, you know, putting medians in and, um, making big wide, you know, bike trails and things like that, so. You know, I don't know how we get a say in it, is all I'm saying, is I think it's something, you know, I think in the past it was presented to us and we're just like, oh, Cookie's gonna handle it, let's just go ahead and let her handle it, but I don't know that I understand, you know, um, the whole, the whole pecking order here, and I guess that's why I'm raising the questions.
Uh, Councilmember Shirley, I'm, I'm reading it here and it says, "Each Big C municipality excluding Clearwater shall take formal action to either nominate one of its own elected officials or support the nomination of elected official from another community or the reappointment of the current representative." So basically, we can, someone on our council, anyone, any elected official can serve on this if they so desire, if, if we nominate them and then our, that, that still goes to the vote of the Big C, we can nominate someone else in a different city, um, or we can, uh, uh, sign on with a, a, um, a renewal for Cookie Kennedy. So, um, there's, you know, there's three options really that are before us. I guess first I'd ask the question if there's anyone interested on our council in serving on this because certainly, um, you know, we would probably want to give them due consideration. Is there anyone on our, I'm sorry?
Can I ask, Lynn, do you think it would make, I mean, I, I have never attended a Big C meeting, so I may be speaking completely out of turn here, so I'm just, but Lynn, do you think that, uh, if one of us volunteered for that, that that would be, that we would be able to even have much say in what?
Well, the, well, what would happen is, okay, there would be another nomination, Cookie's evidently been nominated at some point, uh, so then it would be a vote of the mayors at the Big C, or, you know, if, if the mayors aren't there, the secondary representative, then they would vote and in the end, who, whoever got the most votes would be the person that would be promoted to there.
Oh, so there'll still be one representative?
Yes.
Correct. The Big C will vote on it, each mayor getting a vote, each elected representative, I think it's always, almost always mayors, but there may be in some cases.
Well, it is an example if Mayor Manzo couldn't go to the Big C or something and I think Marv's the secondary.
That's correct.
He, he would be the one that would vote.
Right, Beller Beach will get one vote, along with all the other cities except for apparently Clearwater, so. Um, so, you know, if someone's interested, I mean, absolutely they're gonna get, you know, due consideration here, and I, and I do believe you will have the opportunity to speak to the Big C and, and why you would be the right person to do it, to try and speak to the other mayor. So it's, um, you know, that's typically a, a video meeting now and it's a relatively short thing, it's about an hour, hour and a half, um, usually in the beginning of the month, so.
Mm-hmm.
So I guess I'll ask it again before we move on to what our alternative is, so step one, first priority, anyone on our council wish to be considered for this?
Sure, I will.
Thank you. I don't think we need seconds or anything like that, um, it's, um, we have a, well, I don't know. I don't think we need seconds or anything like that. Um, it's, um, we have a, well, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I think you should probably, you know, take a vote on it, so.
I think we should, yeah. But I don't know that we need a second. We normally don't do that with nominations for stuff. So, um, Jody Shirley has expressed interest on this. Does anyone else have any nominations for any other, anyone else on council? Does anyone have any nominations for anyone in any other municipalities? Jody Shirley is before this council at this point expressing interest in being our nomination for Forward Pinellas. Um, I am going to, uh, well, comments, does anybody have any comments on it? Jody, I'm gonna totally support you on this. Um, I, I think that the issues of Forward Pinellas don't jive with, with what we're doing here in our, in our city. We are our unique city. I think you know it exact over here and I, I'm gonna support that and I'm gonna speak for you when we get to that, um, with that meetings, as long as I'm there and I would hope Marv Beam would do it also, so if he, if I'm not there. Totally support you. Anyone else? Okay, so, okay, I got thumbs up from Dave. So we're gonna, uh, do a, a roll call vote on this and, um, the, the nomi, this would be for Beller Beach to nominate Jody Shirley, Councilwoman Jody Shirley, to be the representative, our representative, um, that, that we're putting up for consideration for Forward Pinellas. A yes vote is to authorize Jody to proceed on that, or Jody's nomination to proceed. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Shirley?
Yes.
Councilmember Swope?
Yes.
Councilmember Aki?
Yes.
Councilmember Bean?
Aye.
Councilmember Gaddis?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gunn?
Aye.
Mayor Manzo?
Aye. So it's seven to zero. Um, Councilwoman Shirley, you are, uh, you are going to be our nominee. Um, I'm gonna ask the city manager if you would contact, or maybe the city clerk, if you could contact, um, the Big C and let them know that this is, was our decision. And I would like, just ask the courtesy that Jody be, um, I, I think they normally, uh, everybody gets a copy of the agenda, but I wanna make sure she knows in advance when the next meeting is so that she will be able to be heard. And she should be on that agenda. Uh, and if, and if she can't put herself on the agenda, then ask it as my request that she be placed on the agenda to speak to the mayors.
Yeah, I would imagine that we'll send a, Patty will send a, uh, just a memo that, to, uh, Mayor Serrano as the Big C president and then they'll, they'll, uh, put that on the agenda at their next meeting.
You would imagine it and, but I've had trouble getting myself on that agenda sometimes just due to the way things communicate sometimes.
We'll, we'll, we'll follow.
Let's confirm it, okay? She's taken a big step here to, to put herself out to do this and I wanna make sure she gets due consideration with the Big C members.
Right.
Thank you. Okay, so we now move to the unfinished business. Um, and Captain Liner is still here. Okay. So we have utilization of a Pinellas County Sheriff's off-duty deputy for a two-week trial period at no cost to the city. Um, we would have to outline the specific duties and outline a method to measure effectiveness and added value. This is unfinished business, so we don't need a motion on here. Um, this, for anyone who might not, um, who might be listening who's not familiar, Sheriff Goltieri, uh, offered this to us on his, um, when he came and appeared before us, um, to basically see what would be like to have an extra, uh, deputy and maybe to hit some of those hotspot things we've been talking about. So with that, I'll turn it over to the council.
I have a question for you. Um, it states that you're going to, um, do a two-week trial period and outline specific duties as well as to measure the effectiveness. What two-week trial period are you gonna look at? Because it would be very difficult to compare a two-week trial period of this year with last year because of obviously the huge decrease in tourism and everything else that's gone on. So what two-week period are you guys gonna do it and compare it to as far as another two weeks without it?
I think that's what we're discussing, but.
Yeah, just, just to give you a little update, I had, uh, I asked Captain Liner to put out the boxes on Gulf Boulevard again.
Correct.
And we did that, uh, the eighty-fifth percentile, uh, speeds and, and these are average, they, they ended up, uh, the highest eighty-fifth percentile was thirty-eight miles an hour. Uh, of the four boxes, uh, there was a thirty-five, there was a thirty-six and another a thirty-seven. So, and, and these were put, uh, at Sixth Street and going north and southbound and at Morgan Street going north and southbound. Uh, Sixth Street, uh, one of the weeks was eighteen to twenty-four August. The other three boxes were from September first to September eighth. And, uh, and speaking to Captain Liner, I asked him for some better clarification of, okay, uh, as an example, if, if we had someone above, uh, forty-one miles an hour, which the, our thirty-five mile an hour zone, there's a five-minute or five-mile leeway. Uh, so if we looked at the times above forty-one or forty-six and we found out that there, there were certain times, as an example, uh, the higher speeds happened on the northbound between, uh, on weekdays, between weekdays and weekends, between four and seven PM at Sixth Street. Uh, on the southbound, uh, they happened between two and six PM on weekdays and weekends. Then we went to, uh, Morgan Park or the Morgan Drive one. Uh, the weekdays were three to six. The weekends, the, the higher speeds were between seven and ten in the morning on the, uh, northbound. And on the weekends, it was between, or on the southbound, it was between week, it's four and seven PM on both weekends and weekdays. So, uh, Captain Liner can speak more to this, but, uh, this is the information we found. Uh, we, overall, the percentage of, of, uh, percent above the limit was, in most cases, uh, let's see, less than, uh, five percent. In most cases, it was two-point-four percent, one-point-three, uh, one-point-six, and there was one area that was six-point-one percent. So, uh, Captain Liner, if you wanna discuss it further?
Yeah, Lynn, I did some additional analysis, obviously. Time here, um, yeah, I'm gonna, so, so just so the council understands, the majority of the, well, state law does not allow us to enforce speed between five mile, five mile, excuse me, six and ten miles an hour over. So they exclude that right off the bat. So, or excuse me. From zero to five, excuse me. So from zero to five, so anything out there from thirty-six to forty, we can't enforce. It's not in state law. They take that right off the top. Um, so then what you look at then is things start coming in at six miles an hour over. So, at forty-one up, state law allows us to enforce the speed. Overwhelmingly, when you, when you're talking six miles an hour over, um, it's six to ten is your overwhelming amount of violators. So anybody out there doing forty-one to forty-five is your main category of what we can enforce. When you hit forty-six miles, which is eleven, over the posted limit, all of the studies indicate that less than one percent of all vehicles out there are going those speeds. So, but you have to also understand too, like, let's say Northmonte Gulf and Morgan, you had thirty-seven thousand cars, thirty-seven thousand one eighty-six that we recorded from September first through sixth. So when you're looking at, uh, one percent, you're talking, you know, less than one percent, you're talking ninety vehicles. So, I don't want you to get lost in all these numbers and stuff, but I can tell you this. One thing is, if we go out there, we can start slowing down the people that are doing six to ten over. Those are gonna be the most of your violators. While we're out there doing that, we can also obviously address the people, the few that come popping up that are doing ten. And in one case, I think somebody was doing thirty, which is insane. Um, so we, we capture that while we're out there. What these boxes don't tell us, um, are the concerns you have with people passing in the median. It'll give us average speeds and eighty-fifth percentiles and stuff, but if we're not out there, we're not seeing it. We can't do anything with these idiots that wanna pass because somebody slows down to turn east on a, a twelve or something. Uh, so what, my thing is, like I said, the sheriff obviously offered, he offered it last time. Um, he came to the meeting in August and offered it again and he said, look, you know, you got two weeks where we can go out there and actually put hands on. Um, we'll use our traffic unit that are well-trained in all this, um, to provide that and then really get a look, um, at how it, how it is out there and then we can come back and tell you. Um, what I did identify with those boxes were those times that Lynn talked about. And I'm like, hey, if, if we had a specific time, when, when, when's the best chance of catching people? Um, or when they're violating it the most? Excuse me, and that's where those times came from. So, I mean, it's obvious up to the council, whatever you wanna do, but the sheriff's offer still stands. Um, and if you wanna move forward with it, I'll work with Lynn on times and any other concerns you have and, and it's kinda where we're at.
I have Glenn Gunn and then I'm gonna speak after Glenn. Go ahead, Glenn Gunn.
Okay, uh, some, some, uh, thoughts, uh, not necessarily in any particular order. Uh, if you bring out a specialized traffic unit to look at some of this stuff, does, does that equate or transfer over to bring in on an additional off-duty officer? In other words, will he have the same skills and have the same equipment to, uh, spot some of these offenders? Okay, and, and related to that is, I agree with you. It's, it's not necessarily speeding. I think some of the residents' issues with, uh, traffic concerns in Beller Beach come down to, just like you say, passing in the median. I think that is probably one of the most egregious things we see in here is there some knucklehead just pulling out around traffic and, uh, bypassing everybody. You've got people blowing through the pedestrian crossing warning lights and that's a pretty egregious one there. And then lastly, you have an issue where you get backing up and traffic congestion at Causeway and, and the lights. So, those, those are issues there. So, a related question is, is we've been offered two weeks and to me, probably one of the most effective ways of gauging the effectiveness of this thing is if those two weeks straddle or include the three-day Halloween or the three-day, uh, holiday weekend coming up in October. That would be a great time to, uh, to, uh, exercise that because you're gonna have peak traffic along Gulf Boulevard during, during that weekend. So I would like to see a, a trial during that period or at least encompass that. The, uh, the duty officer himself, uh, we're asking, how do we measure the effectiveness of this thing? How do we know if it's really adding value to us or worth the additional cost? And, and that's a pretty hard one to see. What I would expect to see, I guess, and the only thing I can kind of, uh, point my finger at is I would expect to see some bump in the, in the s- the traffic stats. So if, if you've got an additional officer on there for two weeks, for, for that reporting month, I would expect to see more citations, more stops. Uh, help me out here. Would I expect to see an increase i- in those stats?
You, you have, I mean, you got two, two possible outcomes. Uh, if we're using specially trained traffic people from our traffic unit that are used to seeing this and doing this and they live and breathe this stuff, if there's an issue out there, then you're gonna see an increase. If we use those specialized components and there's not an increase, then it might be the fact that it's not a big a problem. It could be.
Yeah. Okay, so that, that tells us there's, there is no problem and we may not need that after all and, and we, we have this, uh, misperception that there's a problem out there and that there really isn't, but.
And they're the, they're the only ones that are gonna be able to, and I, I appreciate you mentioning the crosswalks, it slipped my mind. They're the only ones, uh, not the only one, but the one, the boxes are gonna do, that are gonna do the passing, um, and that are gonna do the, um, pedestrian crosswalk. That I can't get for me. I put a deputy out there that's doing all these other stuff. These people, when I have these deputies out there along Gulf Boulevard and they're concentrating on only traffic, they'll be able to hit your pedestrian crosswalks and they'll be able to do the median passing and the speed.
Yeah. Now, I know precisely what Marv is going to bring up here and I agree with it, I think, one hundred percent here.
Marv, I'm gonna come back to you after I speak and then you, you're after me, okay? I, I was, when Glenn is finished, so.
Okay, well then I, I'm gonna bring it up one more time and I'll, I'll steal Marv, what I think is Marv's thunder is the use of unmarked cars. The, 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 the thing of bringing in SUVs with a, a side decal blazin' and a bright gold star gets a lot of attention on Gulf Boulevard and you can pick it out like a sore thumb. So my question is, is why not bring this guy in in an unmarked car and let's see what's really out there?
I'm gonna agree with, I'm gonna agree with Glenn Gunn on that one. I've seen the sheriff have, has an unmarked car right now that's in use. Um, that should be utilized. Uh, I live right by Gulf Boulevard, I could see it from my window and, um, some of my observations, uh, we, we say a two-week trial period, but, you know, if you're out there Monday morning, you're not gonna be finding much. But if you're out there Sunday and if you're out there on Saturday, and I agree with Glenn Gunn also, a holiday weekend, that's when it starts. That's when the fun starts. Um, passing in the center lane is, is routine. Failing to yield to pedestrians and crosswalk is routine. Drag racing has become somewhat of a routine. Um, the, I call it the stunt show with some of these, uh, trained motorcyclists who come through doing wheelies, hand, uh, stuff, standing up on their seats and stuff like that. I'm not a biker, but I don't think that's legal. Um, that pretty much tells me it's not. Um, I do agree that, you know, the majority of people follow the law. You can see it just by looking out the window, you can tell they're doing within the speed limit. But it's not the majority that we're after. The majority of people follow the law in the world. Um, it's not, I, I venture to say, if you looked at all the people who commit crime, Captain, you probably have a small handful of them, five percent maybe, that are the, the troublemakers and the rest of us all follow the law. Same deal here. Most of the people do follow the traffic laws, but that five percent can be horrible. I mean, like you said, we have people that are going twenty, thirty miles over the speed limit. This is a residential area with people walking across to go to the beach, children. Uh, you know, it's a disaster waiting to happen here. So, um, I would suggest that maybe if we, instead of having a two-week solid period, perhaps we consider maybe breaking this up to several weekends and, and a holiday weekend at that to get a good representation, because I just don't think you're gonna get it on Wednesday morning. The other thing I would say is, is maybe the final workout goes between yourself, Captain, and our city manager. I think he's hearing what we have to say here tonight. But I don't wanna lay out the game plan for everybody and say, you know, Columbus Day, we're gonna be out on Gulf Boulevard, because that's as bad as bringing the marked vehicles with the big star on the side. Uh, everybody's gonna know it, you know, and, and then you're gonna say, oh, everybody's, you know, doing it. And then a week later, Veterans Day, it's gonna be horrible, okay? So I don't wanna see that if we could avoid it. So that's my points and I'm gonna go to Marv Beam.
Captain, yeah, like, like Glenn said, uh, if you brought a Ford Taurus out here, that would probably be better than an unmarked squad car. If someone is gonna speed, believe me, the speeders know every car that you guys have. I mean, they just know it hands down. So the minute they see a car that's similar to a sheriff's car, bingo, they're, they're, they got the brakes on. The other thing I like to say is not that I'm getting older, not that I'm that old, but pulling out on Gulf Boulevard, I know your latitude can go up to forty, forty-five. You know, you'll, you'll bend a little bit. But when you're trying to pull out and you see this traffic coming down and you're looking back and forth on Gulf Boulevard, then you have to pull into the center lane because you got traffic north and south. And somebody's doing forty-five, you better get out there in a hurry or they're gonna hit the tail end of your car. And that's the problem we have on the weekends. So when they're, when they're hitting forty, forty-five, to judge to come out in the traffic for someone that's older is a challenge. So I know I've said this on the side street, drop the speed to twenty, but if they drop the speed to thirty, then most people would do thirty-five. Just, just conversation, that's all. I know nobody wants to hear it. Been through this exercise before, but it works.
Glenn, I'll come back to you after I get everybody else on the first go-around. Anybody else on, uh, council comments first go-around? And Captain Liner, maybe if you'll just respond to everybody at the end, it might go quicker than we have in a one-on-one with everybody, one-on-one. Maybe we just, you can respond to everything at once. Um, does anybody else have any other issues before I come back for a second go-around here with Glenn Gunn? Glenn, you have a floor?
Uh, just, just two more things, uh, backstreets. Everybody's got Waze and everybody's got, uh, some sort of app on their smartphone telling them what the, uh, the- them what the uh, the uh, workarounds are, so you know, you got people cutting down Bay Shore or, or whatever, so, so that's, that's one hot button area. And I talked about traffic congestion backing up at the lights at Causeway there. One informal observation I had immediately after they opened up the beach on uh, after the COVID stuff was, we had guys out there manually controlling the lights and my, my informal observation was, boy, things, traffic was really moving through those lights. So, I'm wondering if there, we can't identify some peak hours when traffic's coming across the bridge or going home in the afternoon or late evening and just for an hour or so have an officer out there manipulating those, those lights. So, that, that's just something I noticed. It seemed like traffic was moving a lot faster during some of those peak congestion hours when they were out there manipulating the lights. That's all I have, thanks.
How are we going to leave this? Are we going to, um, I, I mean, I, I think we're, I don't know what, I don't know that we have a start date for this. Again, I don't want to disclose necessarily, but are we ready to move forward with this? Do we trying to get this out for October? There's an idea of doing it for the Columbus Day holiday, um, is that what our goal is? And if so, then um, how do we want to leave fit for action items?
For me or the council?
Anyone. What's the best way of approaching it?
Our, our side of this is if, if y'all want to move forward with it, then I would think we'd, I'd work with Lynn and we'd get it all going and then we've got to get obviously some type of measurement in place so we just don't spin our wheels out there and we can get, we can get you an answer to what you're looking for. Um, but I don't want to go out there and say, hey, we'll measure this and I come back and you're like, we don't want to measure that, so I think we'll work with Lynn on that, as, as long as y'all want to move forward with it.
I think that sounds good. I think uh, get with Lynn, get, you know, a list of those items that have been talked about, maybe Lynn, you can circulate just to final, get a final okay from all the council members that everyone's on board and just get it set up.
Yeah, we can do that. We'll get uh, we'll get some type of schedule set up and uh, based on the information that we've got so far, we'll, we'll pick some times and uh, see how that works out.
And then you would all have, have the data, so when you come back, we'll say, hey, if we're looking to move forward with the secondary employment or, you know, cost side of it.
Right.
Then we have the data, we all make a decision on that. I mean, so the sheriff obviously, stuff that we tend to say, we want to do it, so we're a little busy with no cost, so we put some, we put some resources out there and see what we come up with.
Captain, I'm going to say my thanks again on behalf of myself and the city for the sheriff's generous offer in doing this. Um, it's something we've been talking about. I think everybody on this council's dedicated to having a safe city and, and a better city in terms of, you know, quality of life, and I think some of this is quality of life stuff. Um, so um, thank, you know, our thanks to Sheriff Gaultieri, and please, we're going to welcome all the feedback that you could possibly give us, because I, I, my suspicion is this is going to work, it's, you're going to find, um, you know, these, these, some of these individuals that are abusing our, our rules and laws, and um, I think it's something that this council's going to want to think about down the road in, in terms of, you know, maybe supplementing the police uh, patrols that we have, particularly on some of the key weekends that we know are going to be problems for us. So, thanks again.
Oh, anytime.
Glenn, I'm sorry, Glenn has a comment after you're finished, Captain, go ahead.
No, I just had one, one question. More and more, you drive around our neighboring municipalities, you drive down East Bay, West Bay, you see a lot of unmarked cars, a lot of the neighboring municipalities are using unmarked cars. You see pickup trucks, no light bar on it, you know, no cow catcher bumper on it, and boy, you know, typically you can look in your rearview mirror and pick out that big white SUV with the light bar on it and the big cow catcher thing, and I know who that is. My question is, is, does the sheriff's office employ unmarked cars within the same realm as some of these other municipalities, a gray car with tinted windows and no light bar and, I mean.
We've got a lot of equipment.
Okay.
He's not going to tell us the detail.
Also, line of mine to not give out too much, there's nothing to pollute us from other concerns that were brought forward and studies related to those. So, we're doing more than just one approach here, there's more prompts this. So, all I can tell you is that we'll look at it from every which way we can to get you the best information, the best data, so you can make an informed decision.
Thanks.
Captain, we'll invite you back also when this is concluded to give us some information on this, if you're available.
No problem.
Thank you. Thanks for, again, for the attention to this. Okay, I believe that takes care of unfinished business and we'll move on to item 17, City Attorney, if he has any comments.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Uh, then City Manager, item number 18.
Uh, yes, uh, I gave you your code enforcement report in your packet. Uh, I wanted to uh, ask, depending on what the governor does, where the council stands on meeting in person in October or not meeting, uh, but it's really going to depend on the governor, and at this point, the virtual meeting expires uh, October 1st. So, uh, just some feedback for, for that. Uh, the validation hearing for the stormwater fee is going to be the 25th, we are of September. We're going to do that virtually and I'll be putting a notice out uh, when I get with uh, Chris Rowe, so we can hold that here if, if someone wants to come and uh, speak at the validation before the judge. Uh, let's see, in person, uh, oh, uh, Mayor, I'll have some checks to sign on Friday if you can give me a time. And the last thing is, uh, we had a lien that was out there for several years and between Laura and Patty, we got it collected, it was only about $800, but they made a concerted effort to get that when the property sold. Uh, so I, you know, kudos to them for making sure we got that, that money and it got paid. And that's all I have.
Ben, with respect to the virtual meetings, as I recall the resolution that we passed, I believe we said we were going to utilize the virtual meetings as long as the governor kept it in place. I could be wrong on my understanding, I think that's what it read, um, and if that's the case, then as long as the governor renews it, uh, unless we have another, you know, motion and something official, that's, that's where we stood, I believe, on that resolution. So, I, I might be wrong, if somebody has a different understanding, please bring it up.
Well, I, I just wanted to bring up that right now, the, the uh, governor's thing says October 1st. He, he did extend it to that point and.
When's our council meeting for October?
Uh, October 6th, I think.
So, you'll have plenty of time to, to see if he extends it.
Yeah, 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 it's uh, so I think, you know, from that standpoint, and uh, hopefully we'll have some applications for the uh, Code Review Committee, so we can look at those and uh, go forward with them.
Robin Aki has a question?
Yes.
Update on that email sent by the resident about the code violation on 17th Street? Has that been, I went by and looked at it, I mean, didn't seem like a big.
Hang on a second, I, I, based on Fred Riley's last memo, since that was sent on a legal letterhead and threatening litigation, um, and I'll defer to your expertise, Mr. Riley, but I don't know that we can discuss that. That seemed to me to be a threat of litigation, so you tell me, um, I don't want to overread the letter, it wasn't a formal notice of litigation, but it, yet, it did say, um, if you don't capitulate, I'm going to be suing you or I'm going to be getting damages and stuff. So, before the city manager answers that, I just want to make sure we're within the parameters of our um, ordinance here.
I'm not familiar with the letter, I don't know if Lynn sent it to me or not, but it doesn't ring a bell with me if, if there, the letter referenced anything that was, could, you know, basically is a, that we're about to go to litigation, then I would, would not recommend that you discuss.
He, he threatened it and he wrote it on a lawyer's letterhead, I mean, I, I, I have no problem, if you tell me it's okay, I don't mind if the city manager speaks on it, but he's disputing the validity of our law and the code violation.
I'll defer my question until later, until Fred can look at it. I didn't think it was intent, I just thought that that was his letterhead because it was his firm.
Oh, no, i- yeah, it was his firm and it's a code violation. And uh, I've got, I will tell you this, I, I have the city engineer looking at it because it does block drainage, uh, and uh, no permit was obtained to even put it in place. So, uh, there's a couple issues there, and, and it would go to the magistrate.
Okay, I, I, again, I'm going to, because I didn't get an answer from the city attorney, why don't we do this, um, Mr. Reeves, you know, you certainly know what this one's about and you know what Robin Aki's question is, you can discuss it with Mr. Riley and then get back to us as, you know, either unfinished business or if necessary, as a, as a separate memo, you can do that also. Again, whatever is acceptable, I don't want to commit something that we shouldn't commit to writing, so.
Yeah.
Whatever's the proper way, okay, that's fine. I, I think I saw Jody Shirley's hand, if I'm not mistaken, is that correct?
Yeah, but I'll just wait to hear back from Lynn, because I had another comment about that, but.
Okay. Any other questions for the city manager? Did we answer all your questions, Mr. Reeves?
Yes.
Okay. City Clerk? Is she there, um, Lynn? I know she's there, is she hearing us?
Okay, okay. I just wanted to say, um, I really appreciate that council's going to give me a consensus on how you'd like the minutes done, so that's good, um, I really appreciate that. And then also that um, action minutes are what's always recommended. I mean, you have to have the proper documentation on point of order, the rulings and what led to it, and when somebody requests to have something put on the record, so, but I would really like to hear how you all would like the minutes to be done, so looking forward to that, thanks.
Thank you. Any, any questions for the city clerk? Okay, we have city council comments, it's an odd month, so we could start with Rita Swope and work our way alphabetically backward.
I don't have anything further to say.
Thank you. Um, uh, Jody Shirley?
Um, yeah, just a couple of things that, you know, thank you Captain Liner for all your time uh, this evening, it's, you know, well appreciated, thank you again for that. Um, real quickly, uh, just, I talked to Lynn about this and I know we haven't discussed it again, but it seems as though that um, the Marina discussion has been assigned to the Parks and Rec Board, um, and hopefully we'll hear back from them regarding that uh, work session, work session and how we address those uh, issues on the rates there. Um, I think I had a question about the walking path, this would be towards, for Lynn, the walking paths, are we any closer to getting bids on having those paved or?
Yeah, we, we got the uh, preliminary number, if we did them all, it was about 160,000, and what I suggested is, is we do the projects for the stormwater, that we just tie them in, that it would be less costly to us at one time. So, uh, we'll have some more discussion on that at, at a work session to get some consensus on which way we want to go with that, and then what we could do is just add it into the stormwater, or not, I don't want to say it's coming from the stormwater fee, it would be added in as, as part of the stormwater project, but it would be paid for with general funds.
It would be with the paving's done on those streets, okay?
Right.
Good. And then just kind of a final, just when I, I was kind of reading all these minutes and it got a little confusing, there's some, you know, back and forth, you know, let's put this hat on and take that hat off, and I'm going to, I'm going to make comments about, um, I'd like to make citizens' comments, I want to, you know, I want to be council now. I think that, and I don't know, just, just bringing it up so there's not that confusion, if we want to discuss things that are not on the agenda, or you want to make a statement about things that are not on the agenda, but as a citizen, not as a council member, would it be appropriate to say those things in citizens' comments, to say, I'd like to, during citizens' comments, say my piece as a citizen about whatever topic I want to talk about? And that's, I'm, I don't know if I'm looking for a reply, but maybe some direction with that for future meetings. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Dave Gaddis?
I have no comment at this time.
Marv Beam?
No, I'm just um, listening to Jody and uh, the walking paths, that's about the only thing that I had on my mind, so I'm looking forward for something going on there. That's all.
Robin Aki.
Now, again, Jody covered what I was going to say about the Marina, so waiting to hear about that, otherwise, no comment.
Vice Mayor?
Now, I've got a question about uh, 2-63D that uh, was raised by uh, City Attorney in his memo, and my question is, is that standard boilerplate in most municipal ordinances? My, the reason why I asked that is because, I mean, here we've got a uh, an ordinance issue and all of a sudden, because we're making inferences, we can't even discuss it or ask what the status is or why, and so my question is, is, is that provision to discuss those sorts of prospective legal actions standard boilerplate, or is that peculiar to uh, Bel Air Beach?
Um, I would say it's probably peculiar to Bel Air Beach.
So, okay, so, a- and it's an ordinance, so I mean, that's, that's not a charter review kind of thing, that's something that could be changed?
Well, it's a city code provision, so you, you can change it if, if you choose to.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Um, I guess to that end, I'm going to echo that, I, I read that and I, I wasn't as familiar with that either, I guess, as everyone, um, and uh, I thought it only had to do with uh, litigation that was actually pending, but this is actually a situation, we've had several letters um, in recent times with threatened litigation, and it seems to tie the hands of our council. I think it's a very bad, very bad ordinance, okay? The whole purpose of that, of a, of a letter and, and why the Florida statute gives a six-month time is so that the city can react to it and see if they can head off litigation if they feel that that's in their best interest. We can't even discuss it. That is a terrible rule. The problem that we have now, unfortunately, is that there are letters out there, there is notices out there, I'm not going to discuss the details, but it does implicate certain people on this council and we may, and I, and I, I started this earlier when I was in the car, Mr. Riley, we're going to have to be looking to you to guide us and shepherd us through as to what the conflict rules are. There were some proposals tonight that I know are out of left field, there's no one on this council, as far as I know, be it accused, be it relations, be it friends, it doesn't matter, you don't, the way I read these rules, no one has to be resigning anything, and you will confirm that with us, please, in the future. But you may have to recuse yourself from certain votes, so I think to Glenn Gunn's point, I think this is an ordinance I would like to see changed, like, immediately. The problem is, there is many of us on this council, um, who might have a conflict now, so, you know, we may be changing it with a small group of individuals, but change it nonetheless, I think we need to push ahead if we can legally change this, because I think that we want to have a discussion on any future litigation that may ever come up in front of the city. This is not a good idea, okay? It's not a good idea to discuss regular litigation in the open, but something like this, that's exactly why the state gives us the six months, so um, I just throw my two cents in on that for consideration, I think it is something. To Jody Shirley's point, just to echo it, I know we're not supposed to have back and forths, um, I would have no problem with the, a council member, you know, speaking as a citizen, we are all citizens of this city, if that makes it easier. Um, I, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, I'm not sure if she was referring to me or not, I had to, um, because of the unique situation with what's happening in Bel Air Shore, I could only speak as a citizen, so that's why I had to exercise that. I don't think it'll come up on too many issues in the future. Um, other than that, I think we are running out of time on the census, I don't think we did very great, but I think we did better than a lot of other cities, so if you know anyone who hasn't completed the census, um, time to do it, because I think we're running out. And last but not least, last year we did a proclamation on September 11th, we did have that proclamation, um, I just want to make sure that everybody keeps in their minds and make sure our city keeps in its mind the uh, the horrible tragedy that occurred on September 11th on, in both Pentagon, Shanksville, Pennsylvania, and the World Trade Center and all the people that fought to get those freedoms back for us, so um, I'll never forget it, I lived uh, 20 miles away from there and um, I just want to make sure nobody else does either in, in our city, so um, we're totally behind all the first responders and all the military people that went and made things safe for us, so um, that proclamation is out there and nothing I don't think has changed in this last year, other than unfortunately we've had to have more actions as a country to, to police this stuff in the world, there's bad people that would take our freedom from us, so um, we're, we're totally behind them. Glenn Gunn?
Yeah, to uh, address uh, Jody Shirley's thing about this, have they? Yeah, to address Jody Shirley's thing about this half thing, speaking as a citizen, it goes back to this 2.63, and it's paragraph C. And there are some protocols for making citizens' comments. So I I think something that needs to be looked at is, if it isn't allowable sort of thing, there needs to be some compliance with the protocols on this thing. In other words, citizens' comments are made during the citizens' comments portion of the public forum. And there's protocols for, they're only made from the podium, and you give your name and you give your address. So and it it only applies to items not on the agenda. So I'm saying, I agree with with everything that I've heard here, but there's more to it than just, yes, I think we can do it. Everybody should be allowed to exercise their First Amendment rights. Well, I think we need to take a step back and look at, okay, well, what other aspects of this do we need to comply with?
And that's fine. We can, we can, if we wished, we can debate it at a council session. I don't think it'll at a work session. I don't think it'll come up a lot. What you just did, speaking after me, actually isn't in our rules. It's city council comments. It's not time for a debate. I'm not picking on it. I I'm just saying, there's a lot of things that we do. There tonight, there was some very effective questioning of Captain Liner and Lynn Reeves, just to get information and even Fred Riley. But technically, if we really want to enforce our rules, there's not supposed to be any questioning. It all supposed to go through the chairman. I mean, it would be cumbersome if we did that. So I never, you know, I mean, on certain rules, we're we're bound because it's under ordinance or charter. Other things we can be more flexible on, I certainly will do what the group feels like. I I'm not, I have, I'm not wed to any of these rules. If it's in an ordinance, if it's in the charter, we don't have the latitude unless we change either of them. But, you know, I I had, I take no offense that you asked a question after I spoke here. And I think that that's healthy. So I, you know, unless it gets crazy out of hand, I don't think it ever needs to be stopped. And I think it's healthy. So anyway, that was the conclusion of my comments. If anyone else has anything else, I'm going to ask for an adjournment then. We have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Our next meeting, Lynn, is the 20, when is it?
First.
21st, right. Okay, so we'll see everybody on the 21st at 5:05.
All right.
Interesting time. We'll see you then. Good night.
Stay safe, everybody.